Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our July 26, 2022 City Council meeting. My name is Val Gilman. I'm president of the City Council. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the City Council and according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the City Council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone and you can press star nine to request to speak, if you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. In attendance, we have Jason Grow, Frank Majota, Tony Gross, Jeff Worley, happy birthday Jeff, Tracy O'Neil, Scott Memard, and Jamie O'Hara, Councilor Nolan, our vice chair isn't able to be here tonight. As far as city staff, we're happy to have our mayor Greg Berger on the call. We have Senator Bruce Tar. Welcome, Senator. We have our CFO John Dunn, our auditor Kenny Costa. And I believe that is it right now. Let me just see if there's anybody else. Attendees, that is members of city staff. And we have Ted Costa from Senator Tar's office. So first order of business, Madam, of course, we have our city clerk, Joanne Cinos. How could I not introduce you? So Joanne, first order of business, Madam Clark, thank you. First order of business is oral communications. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and a matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same. And a copy shall be forwarded to the City Council. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes. The council president shall not allow complaints as an individual performance. Is that interference that I'm hearing? Are we good? Does everybody hear that? Okay, okay. So would anyone here like to request to speak? I see two folks. Madam Clerk, would you bring in Cal? Cal, would you introduce yourself and give us your address? And you have up to three minutes to speak to us on matters not on the agenda.
Hello. Firstly, I would like to introduce myself. My name is Cal Sam Filippo. I own a property and live at the property at 20 Shepherd Street, Gloucester, Massachusetts. So I have a, I guess, a very big concern, and it's not just a concern of mine, it's a concern of my my tenants, my neighbors, and everybody in my whole neighborhood around Burnham's Field. The Gloucester Housing Authority, elderly housing that's there as well. So we have three crossings in our neighborhood for the train crossing, the MBTA. And these crossings have a man or the operator that honks a horn. And this horn is honked at everywhere, every 30, 45 minutes from 5:15 in the morning till sometimes up to one o'clock in the morning, 12:45, something along those, those, those lines. And sometimes it's bearable where it's not honked extremely loud, but majority of the time it's honked profusely loud. And I've even heard it all the way up in Burnham's Blackburn, where the fitness zone is when I, when I attend the gym there. That's how far this honk goes. So you can see how it's an issue for me, my neighbors, my tenants, even my, I have a dog, he gets super anxiety about it at, you know, 12:30 at night, this huge honk is happening when he's trying to sleep. I'm trying to sleep. My neighbors are trying to sleep. The elderly people next to me are also trying to sleep. And this, this horn is just extremely, extremely loud, extremely excessive. And we want to try to get it to be a quiet zone. And if I need to sign, you know, get 200, 300, 400 signatures, I will do that as well. I've talked to Tracy O'Neil about this issue today, and I talked to her a couple of months ago. I know she's received multiple calls from people in my neighborhood about the issue. And we would really, really appreciate to make this area a quiet zone or at least get some kind of compromise in the middle where the guys, the operator is not allowed to honk until it's, you know, 7:00 AM or you can't honk past 10:00 PM. Because, you know, honking at 5:15 in the morning, like 10 plus times, and then again at, you know, 12:45 at night, I think it's extremely, extremely excessive. And everybody in my neighborhood feels the exact same way. And like I said, if I need to get signatures for proof or anything of the sorts, I will do that. And I would greatly appreciate any help towards this issue. Thank you guys very much. And I'm hopefully going to hear you guys' response. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming to our meeting. Next hand raised is Joe. Joe, would you introduce yourself and your address? And you have up to three minutes to talk to us.
Hi, I just had to unmute myself there. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you for doing what you do. We need help over in Magnolia. We've got an issue with our pier, as many of you know. And I was looking there this weekend, what, looking out at the pier and saying, yep, the pier is officially dead. There was nobody on the pier. There's usually lots of kids in the pier, lots of boats coming and going, lots of activities, access to the water. And the pier was, there was like two people standing there at a time, maybe looking out and walking back and forth, and the pier was dead. And so, you know, I think back in how we've gotten here and, you know, this is all comes down to one individual, a harbor master who didn't want us on this pier anymore and decided he was going to kill this pier for us. And he has done that effectively. So.
Joe, would you please refrain from making personal comments about our city staff? I would appreciate that. So please continue.
I'll say, I'll be as nice as I can. So I had spoken to the mayor's office back in April. And back in April, we had, I had gotten a response from the mayor. And I'll just read this, you know, two sentences that says, the second issue, and this is the mayor's response to me. The second issue is allowing dinghies to tie up to the pier itself. I have instructed the harbor master to develop a planned procedure to make this happen. If there is a workable solution, make it happen. My number one priority is to protect the pier and not add any undue strain on the structure. Please stay tuned. So I was excited to hear him say that I have instructed the harbor master to develop a planned procedure to make this happen. So we thought we were going to get some positive response from that. And then we saw we were on the Waterways Board Agenda thinking, oh, good, this is moving forward, just made where the mayor was going to say it. So but I caught wind at the last minute that that wasn't going to be what was going to happen, that they were going to vote us out that night. And I said, how did this happen? So I called the mayor's office. I spoke to Pam. I said, Pam, I'm getting wind that this is not a good, good meeting. You know, is that the case? She said, I'll call you back. She calls me back and says, oh, no, it's going to be a positive meeting. You'll get to have input. Don't worry. This is about coming up with a workable solution to keep your out halls on the pier. And I said, okay, great. Thank you. Got to the meeting. We didn't get to speak. They voted us out. They had a lot of negative things to say about us that weren't true. And then, you know, they voted us out. So they went like, no, you're kidding me. So I called the mayor's office the next day and I asked to meet with Greg, who wouldn't meet with me, said, no, I'm not meeting with you, basically through Pam. Because I was speaking to Pam about it and his Waterways Board has made a decision and he's sticking by it. So I said, how did we get here from the fact that he was going to make this happen? Today got us voted out. And, you know, so that's what I'd like to know. And I'd like to know where we stand in getting our out halls back on the pier and getting our pier back and getting our community back up and functioning around this pier because we all enjoy it. And the Magnolia citizens raised $180,000 roughly that went into this pier, plus what the state funding is going to be. And the, and the, you know, funding from Bruce Tar's office, thank you. And, you know, they're going to get paid off this pier. And we've put a lot of money into this pier, a lot of effort into this pier, and we're not even getting to use this pier. So we would like to get our out halls back. I know there's discussion with the Waterways Board about some members, and now we're considering their vote. But it's happening very slowly. The summer is going to be over before we know it. August is around the corner. They're saying that maybe we can get it on the agenda for September. And it's like, well, what good does that do us for this year? This is.
Joe, can you summarize? Because I've, we've let you go well over three minutes.
Okay, thank you. So the short story is, we'd like to get our out halls back in the pier. We'd like to get activities back in the pier. We know the funding is in process for the ramp and the float, and we appreciate that. Again, that could have been done and could have been in place for this year. But again, things aren't happening. And there's an individual behind it all that's keeping us from using this, this pier. So we appreciate it. And thank you for your help getting this pier back up and functioning. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Joe. Next is phone number ending in 6850. You are on our Zoom call. You are unmuted. Would you introduce yourself? And you have up to three minutes to speak on any matter that's not on the agenda. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Craig Hamilton. I live at 46 Grove Street in Gloucester. And my concern is the hockey, the street hockey rink that's being built up at State Fort Park. And how we've gotten to where we are today with it. Looking at the initial budget that was supposed to start at $306,000, which now I'm hearing is closer to $600,000. And I don't understand how a nonprofit organization is building on, on public property, up at State Fort Park, prime property to boot. And looking at back on 11 of 2019, Councilor Cox had advised and spoke with Mike Hale, the DPW doctor, who told her that nothing will happen until this project is fully funded. And here we are today going into August 2022. And I'm being told that they're now seeking another $115,000 for lighting. They've already been given $100,000 from the Community Preservation Act back in the very beginning. I mean, that money shouldn't even been given until it was always fully funded anyway. I'm looking at the budget form, and I'm looking at the lighting alone, and they have it for $45,000 with private funds. So I don't know where they're now asking for $100,000 from the taxpayers for that money. And liability, where does the liability run with this? Once it's already up and running? It's city property, but it's a nonprofit organization that's running it. If somebody gets hit up there, a kid gets, you know, hit and sticked and stuff there, is the city liable for that? Or is it under somebody else? There's just a lot of, I'm also hearing that there's no, the proper permits weren't even pulled for this project. So I just have a lot of concerns about what it's becoming up there. The basketball hoops I saw from the very beginning when when Mr. Ellis had, you know, proposed this project, and he said that the basketball hoops in the basketball court there was depleted, depleted up there. I've been going up there at least five years now, walking my dog. I walk my dogs. My dog doesn't, isn't allowed to go in the the dog park with all the other dogs that go in there. My dogs just think they're with dogs. But I've been walking my dog at State Fort for five years now. And every summer, that basketball court, every single night is full of kids and people. So where do those people go now? Where do, you know, where happened to the basketball court? You're, you're sending this street hockey organization, this money, for a very short percentage of people that actually like street hockey. My kids are all grown up. I don't pay them on playing hockey up there.
I hate to interrupt you, but time is up. Can you just? And just for the folks that have been on the call, you will get a response back from the mayor in the next two weeks. It'll be in our packet at the next meeting. And so you will get a response. And I would suggest that you reach out to your ward counselor as well because they can update you. So thank you.
President, I've made many, many calls. I fought to get grocery paves for years and years and years with the old administration. And I never got any letters and responses back within two weeks or at all from any of them.
So you will, you will see.
I would really like to get some kind of feedback on this. And I'm going to be calling every, every two weeks when you guys have these meetings.
We understand.
Elaborate on it.
You will get a letter in two weeks. And the situation has been really diligent about that. So thank you for making our call. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, next hand is raised is Mary Ann Boucher. Hi, Mary Ann, would you introduce yourself and your address? And you have up to three minutes to speak to us.
Thank you, Mary Ann Albert Boucher, 93 Mont Pleasant Avenue. And two, two things to talk about. One is the creek. No disrespect to anyone that wanted the electronic sign in regards to the rescheduling of the lobster crate race. Electronic sign that's been placed on the boulevard. But why don't we have a sign of that magnitude showing the people that are visiting our city and the residents of our city that we have a very contaminated creek? I'm, I'm fearful that we don't want the people to know that. That's the message that I've been told. That's the message that I'm receiving, that they're trying to keep this quiet, as quiet as possible. Reservations will go down. You know, I'm just repeating what I hear. The other thing is the Niles Beach incident with the security guards. I'm not going to get into that because I don't know all of the details of the, the owner and how far out they own. But I do, and I have witnessed safety issues in regards to now that they are limiting as to where people can drop off our children and, and supplies. I highly encourage our city to add a piece of granite to the section by the porta potties because there used to be a section of the wall that you could step up on. It was like a step. The city came in and when they repaved and they added that little piece of paving to add like a buffer zone so the car wouldn't drive off the wall. They filled in that piece of granite. And now people have to walk with their babies behind all of the cars pulling in and out to get to the, the ramp, the middle ramp. And I foresee an accident waiting to happen. So if they could just add a piece of granite by the porta potties, I don't know if it's allowed. I don't know if it's acceptable. And I'm not going to get into who owns what, because that's the law to determine. But we're now, where we've never had an accident before, we're now going to have somebody hit by a car. And that's the last thing that I wanted to want to see. So those two things, I think, is extremely important. And I, I highly recommend that our city does something about each of these. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
And happy birthday, Jeff.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in public comments? Beverly Pelmachi, welcome, Beverly. And could you introduce yourself and your dress? And you have up to three minutes to talk to our council.
Hi, Beverly Pelmachi, 8 Commonwealth Avenue. I sent a letter, an email actually, to the mayor and everybody on the council regarding the impact that Airbnb's are having on the year-round rental market in town. I did hear back from Jeff Worley. And I'm wondering if this issue is being discussed within the city. And if it is, what the, the general consensus is. I mean, I know this is a nationwide problem. It's even a worldwide problem. There are Berlin, Paris, I mean, cities, Barcelona are all trying to rein these in. And I just wondered what the attitude of the city is because there's certainly a dearth of rentals, year-round rentals in the city, and I, I'm concerned about it.
Thank you very much for coming to speak to us. Anyone else have their hands raised? Seeing none, next order of business, Madam Clark.
The next order of business is a presentation, MBTA update on Washington Street.
Thank you, Madam Clark. So I'd just like to do a brief introduction. Counselors, before we begin the update, I just wanted you to all know that there will be an opportunity to ask questions, but we'd like it to be clear that technical questions will most likely require answers from MBTA and the spokespeople. And so I'm requesting that our city clerk, Joanne Cinos, compiles questions submitted by counselors on behalf of their constituents until the close of business on Thursday, July 28. And on Friday, Mayor Verga will submit the questions to Senator Tar and Ms. Margaret Frante so they can submit them in unison to the MBTA for response. And I also wanted to comment that when our questions are finally answered, Senator Tar and Ted Costa will send these responses back to Mayor Verga and the City Council, which in turn will be communicated as, as we see fit. So I think this is important. It's just a process introduction. And I would like to introduce our mayor, Greg Berger, who will make the introductions of this matter that we're here to discuss tonight. So thank you, Mayor Verga.
Thank you, Madam President. We, obviously, the, the discussion around the MBTA, the Crosses, et cetera, is big news around town, a big concern to all of us. Safety is obviously at the very top of the list for all of us. So as a result, Friday, we had a Zoom call with the council president, myself, Ted Costa from Senator Tar's office, Senator Tar from Keolis, Alana Westmore, and Sherri Warrington, and from the MBTA, Angel Donahue Rodriguez, and Ryan Colahan. I hope I pronounced that correctly. And it was just to sort of bring us up to date. Ryan, we should mention, was on vacation, and he still joined us in on the Zoom call. And we had a pretty good discussion about where we are, what the concerns are. And we're trying to keep this process open, you know, the lines of communication between the leadership here in town, the president, myself, and the senator, and our rep. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Senator Tar to sort of give like a recap of where we are. And then, as Val said, we'll take questions that we three may be able to answer. Anything that's more of technical nature will be submitted through to MBTA and Keolis and answered or specifically by them. So.
Ted Costa on the, on the call. So we can, can we bring him in as a panelist, Joanne? Terrific. All right, great. So Senator Tar, we're so happy that you are here and that once again, you are taking all the action you can to get around, your hands around this matter. So.
Once we're present, I think you lost Senator Tar. I don't see him on the screen. Oh, he's back.
Hello, Madam President.
I see you. You're right.
So, so Madam President, thank you to you and the members of the council and also to our mayor. And for clarification, Ted, who was a member of my staff, is our liaison to the MBTA and also works on transportation issues with the Mass DOT. And I would point out at the outset that with all of those state transportation agencies, we have regular conversations and ongoing conversations, which if they don't occur on a daily basis, they certainly occur on a weekly basis. And we are happy to work as a liaison between the members of the council and the mayor and the administration to make sure that we have good communication and that we fully exhaust all of our options to ensure that all of the transportation infrastructure that is a state responsibility on Cape Ann is safe at all times. And so we were alerted to the situation relative to the gates and the grade crossing on Washington Street by a constituent. We had also been alerted to the situation by Councilor Worley. And I believe Councilor O'Neil may have also contacted us about it. When that happened, we immediately began a conversation with the folks at the MBTA and with the folks at Keolis. Ted was in touch with both entities. And we indicated our concern, as we know, everyone would have a concern, to make sure that this grade crossing is safe. Particularly because it is probably one of the most active streets by volume in the entire city. And so we want to make sure that it's safe at all times. We asked both entities to investigate this and look at it. That review is still being completed. But in the meantime, we thought it was appropriate to arrange a briefing that the mayor made reference to for you acting in a representative capacity as council president, Madam President, and also with the mayor. And I would suggest that it's important that we keep open lines of communication and that we all communicate together about this matter, which again is important to all of us. That being said, Madam President, currently, the MBTA has indicated that there are no major modifications that are planned. It's important to understand that ATC, Automatic Train Control, has been installed throughout the entire system, which gives dispatchers more control over individual trains. And positive train control continues to be installed throughout the system. There are some components of that that remain to be installed. And quite frankly, they have been postponed so that the train system is not disrupted during the tourist season because we know that we have already had significant disruption in terms of the train service running to Gloucester and Rockport. And the concern has been not to proceed with those things until the tourist season has passed and those installations can be completed. In addition to that, I think it's important to note that grade crossings regularly require some modifications. And without getting into too much detail, it's because the gates are triggered by an approaching train which completes a circuit that is, involves the connection of the train and the two rails on the track. And sometimes that has to be adjusted because of humidity and heat and in the winter, actually because of the accumulation of snow and ice, and sometimes even the pooling of water. And so those adjustments continue to be made on an ongoing basis. Inspections of all of the grade crossings on all of the lines continue to be made on an ongoing basis. And it is imperative to stress that safety needs to be our number one concern. And we need to ensure that folks feel safe and in fact are safe going through this grade crossing and all of the others in the city because it is not acceptable to have a situation where there is a lack of safety. Nor is it acceptable to have folks questioning the safety of the grade crossing and hesitating as they're going through them. You may be aware from news reports that we had an incident in Wilmington, which is also in our Senate district, back in January. That precipitated a tremendous amount of concern and a tremendous amount of activity. And one of the issues that we faced in Wilmington was folks being hesitant as they approached the grade crossing. They would stop unexpectedly, and that would cause a problem for the motorists behind them. So we want to make sure that everyone is on the same page. I think the methodology that the mayor has laid out is very good so that again, we can communicate together and we can have a unified approach in this matter. And I would suggest, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, that Representative Franti feels the same way about safety being an imperative here. And it's not something that we will compromise about. But it is something that deserves solid investigation, clear answers, and a unified approach. So what's been described by the mayor will allow us all to participate together. We will ensure that the questions that are asked are directed to the appropriate officials at the MBTA and at Keolis. And that those answers are communicated back. And if we need further communication, we will work to facilitate that as well. And I believe the mayor, other than that, gave a very good recap of our discussion. And we hope to continue the process. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all about it tonight. And I appreciate the partnership of the council and the administration. And I would suggest that the other entities that we need to bring into the conversation at a time that the mayor and you deem appropriate are the police chief and the fire chief, because they also have an important role to play here. And we can talk about that perhaps more, but I do think it's important that their input be solicited as well. And we channel their questions to the MBTA and Keolis and the responses because they're on the front lines of public safety in our community. They do an outstanding job. And they need to be part of the communication and the conversation.
Thank you, Senator. Ted, do you have anything to add? Or Mayor Verga?
I'll refer to the senator's office. So Ted.
Go ahead.
Council President, I feel that Senator Tar has summed up, as did the mayor, what we, what we discussed on Friday. The urgency was to, to make people, as the senator said, feel that they were in a safe operation going across Washington Street and that in fact the gates were functioning properly. We'll wait for the final reports and the correspondence that we asked for on that meeting on Friday, and we will plan accordingly after that, that document is received.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ted. Mayor Verga, do you have anything to add?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Counselors, not technical questions, because technical questions we can give to the clerk's office to compile. But do you have any process questions that you'd like to ask about what our next step is? Counsel Gross.
Yeah. Good evening, Senator Tar and Ted. My question is, is I didn't hear anything about monitoring whether or not the system's actually functioning properly. You know, we've been through a dry, very, very dry stretch here, which means that, you know, those contact points have not been joined together through moisture. The trains have done it. But if we had any, have they stationed anyone to monitor to make sure that this thing is functioning, you know, repeatedly, you know, rather than just waiting for incidents to happen? The, Keolis doesn't have, you know, all candid, doesn't have the best safety record. So anyway, from what I can glean from recent news accounts, so I was just wondering if they were planning on doing any monitoring of this. And do we have any trouble at, you know, Maplewood Avenue?
Senator, do you have a response?
I do. Thank you, Madam President, and through you to Tony. First of all, Tony, I appreciate the question, and I'm going to be very careful to suggest that I am not a technical expert. So I'm going to speak to you from a layman's perspective. And regard to your comment about the record of the MBTA, I think you may be aware of my record in pursuing greater accountability for safety measures with the MBTA. And in fact, the Senate passed a transportation bond bill just about a week ago, and I amended that bill to require the MBTA to hire an independent third party to do annual safety audits to ensure that the system is safe and to make recommendations for things that can be done if it's not safe. So this is a matter of primary importance to me, has been for quite a while. You may also know that I was the author of the language that amended the budget to create the Fiscal Management and Control Board for the MBTA, which was sought to rectify some of the problems that it had years ago. So your point is well taken. With regard to monitoring of the gates at the grade crossings, my understanding is there is something that's analogous to the black box in an airplane that monitors the functioning of the gates at the grade crossing and the signals, and that that information is collected and it is determined whether or not there are malfunctions, and whether there could be a malfunction as a result of the conditions at the grade crossing. To answer your question directly, there is no individual that is stationed there on a regular basis that electronic means is used to try to ascertain the safety and the operability of the grade crossing. In addition to that, the MBTA regularly inspects the grade crossings, and there is a distinct person known as a signal maintainer that visits the grade crossings and checks for their operability and determines if there is a problem. And again, I think it's important to understand that, well, two things. Number one, the grade crossings do require some tweaking from time to time to ensure that those contact circuits on the approaches are operating properly. The second thing that's important to understand is that if there is a problem, the default is for the gates to go down and to stay down until the default is, until the problem is remedied. And sometimes, in a community, that can be problematic, because it causes traffic to stop. But the MBTA's position, and this is, I believe, required by the Federal Rail Administration that oversees all of the railroads in the United States of America, is that the default mode for the gates is that they be down if there is a problem. And when that occurs, the signal maintainer responds, seeks to remedy the problem. And until the signal maintainer returns that grade crossing to service, the trains are not dispatched through that area.
And just a quick follow-up. Is there, and I haven't been through there in a while, I go in the back way to town, but is there ample warning, audible warning bells that before the gate comes down so people have a chance to react?
There are indeed. And again, I want to be careful not to try to get into too many technicalities that I'm not qualified to respond to. But there is, there are bells and there are flashing lights. And I believe the requirement from the FRA is that there's at least 20 seconds prior to the gates coming down, that those be in operation. In addition to that, and this relates to one of the things that you heard during oral communications, the quiet, the grade crossings are not quiet zones. And so the operator of the train is required to make an audible sound with the horn on the train's approach to the grade crossing. Now, in some cases, folks, you know, are not happy about that because of the noise that it creates. But it is another safety mechanism, again, that is required and that the MBTA follows. And in fact, in some instances, follows more than the requirements.
Other questions from counselors? Counsel O'Neill and then Counsel Worthley.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Senator Tar, for being here. And you too, Ted. I really appreciate it. Senator Tar, you mentioned the ATC, Automatic Train Control, and then you mentioned passive train control. What would be the passive train control?
So it, thank you, first of all, for the question, Counselor, and it's good to be with you. The PTC is actually Positive Train Control.
Right.
As I understand it, and again, this is something that we should get a better explanation for, from the folks at MBTA and Keolis. But it essentially allows, in a situation where something isn't right, where the train is going too fast, or it isn't braking properly, or there's a suspicion that the operator has become incapacitated for some reason, it allows the dispatch center to actually take control of the train. We have seen situations that have been well-publicized where something happens with the operator. And without getting into the issue about operator error or other kinds of issues, it does allow, if all else fails, for someone at a central control point to take control of the train, to at least bring it to a safe stop. And that's about as much as I know, Tracy, and we'll get you better answers. This is something that my recollection is, was required by the federal government after a number of very significant failures around the country. And it's a very costly thing to install, and it's been a very laborious thing to install. And as I mentioned, some of it was installed in our area, particularly when the bridge was not functional, because that was downtime. So it enabled the work to be done. But there are a few components that are left to be installed. But when it is done, it will add a very important tool for safety.
Okay, thank you. And you mentioned that heat and humidity can affect that so-called little black box. How would, would someone have to come down and recalibrate the track to adjust for the 90-degree heat required? I mean, I'm guessing maybe that had something to do with it?
So, so what I was referring to is actually the circuit that exists between the two rails on the track and the train. So when the train approaches, and I believe it's 60 feet on either side, when the train is approaching, it completes the circuit. That circuit directs the gates to come down, the lights to flash, the bells and the other things to go off. Because it is, in a way, crude, because it involves the train connecting with the rails, it does require periodic modification. So to give you an example, in Wilmington, what caused some of the problem that we've had there is the ballast had not been properly adjusted, and so was allowing the pooling of water. So the water acted to increase the conductivity of that circuit. So that the, actually, the gates were coming down when they shouldn't, because the water created sort of a fault circuit. So from time to time, modifications have to be made. I am aware that humidity creates a problem with sensitivity of that circuit, and that's what the signal maintainer does. They regularly inspect the grade crossing, and they make adjustments as are necessary. And the black box that I was referring to is not affected by those things. The black box records problems, and then that information is used to make sure that the grade crossing is safe. If a problem is detected, then a signal maintainer responds. But signal maintainers also are inspecting the grade crossings periodically. And again, it's my understanding it's fairly frequently, but I don't know that I'm qualified to say what the frequency is.
And they do that manually at the site?
They do.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Worthley.
Thank you. And thank you, Senator Tar and Ted Costa for joining our meeting and your presentation tonight, to Mayor Verga and Council President Gilman for arranging this meeting. I think it's very.
Counsel Worthley, you're not being heard. Your Wi-Fi must be on the blink. Counsel Worthley, we can't hear you. Let's go back. You have to start again. We didn't hear a word you said.
I apologize. I thank Senator Tar.
You thanked everybody. We got that. And then we didn't get your.
Sure.
Your comment.
My children have found a Gloucester rock that says, bloom where you're planted. And so I sort of stumbled into some work on this, and I documented it, shared it with Senator Tar's office, with Mayor Verga, and with Council President Gilman. I wasn't a part of the meeting on Friday, but I'd like to share the update, the information I have, that I think is relevant to the public and not undermine any of the work that's been done. But I probably spent about 75 to 80 hours on this last week, and I've learned a lot that might be helpful. It came to my attention from retired Deputy Chief Steve Aiello, who I think, we don't need to have his resume here to know he's credible and very reputable in his advocacy for public safety. So I saw his Facebook post, and I reached out to him and learned a lot about what happened to his wife and his son. And the first report came from Fox News, saying there was a confused driver. And then he posted something, and we learned that there are 29 people that this has happened to where the gates fall on their cars. I filmed it. We have lots of evidence of this. I was speaking with Times reporter Ethan Foreman, and shortly after that, I got an unsolicited proposal from the government affairs person for Keolis. And I learned a lot, and I think the public should know this. The gates are working as designed. And the problem is, as Senator Tar said, there's more than one system at work here. There's the completing of the circuit, which triggers a timer for the train coming in or leaving, and the gates drop. The second tier of this is there's a motion detector. The motion detector supersede everything. There's a train coming, gates drop, and they do drop pretty quickly. Now, I don't want to ever be accused of correcting Senator Tar, but in this one instance, I learned from his staff that the Washington Street Crossing is a quiet zone. It was grandfathered in before the 2015 federal regulations. Maplewood Ave, Willow Ave, and Cedar Street are not quiet zones. What we've learned and addressed, and I think solved, is that on the inbound train, I'm sorry, inbound, coming from Boston, going to Rockport, the gates drop as planned. The train goes to the platform, drops people off, picks them up. And much like if you're driving a standard, which I've never driven, but I've driven people who do, when they shift to going forward again, they release a brake. That brake triggers a one-inch backing up, a rolling, and that then triggers a motion detector to drop the gates again, because they see it as a train's coming, and naturally, the gates drop. But unfortunately, the dropping after people have been, they've been indicated that they can go forward because the train is at the station. And so this information, I think, is helpful. Keolis, I shared a video of this. They sent an engineer down that day, and they addressed it. They changed the sensitivity on the motion detector, so the rollback doesn't trigger the second dropping at Washington Street. What they haven't figured out yet is that the outbound train did the same thing for when the IOs were experiencing that. That hasn't been determined yet, but they're using the same data that Senator Tar is referring to, like the black box, to determine why that's happening. I certainly would be happy to continue helping and advocating. I've communicated with Counsel O'Neill, whose ward this is happening in. But I do feel like this is a citywide issue. The train is used by commuters, visitors, by everybody. So I'd like to continue working on that if it's welcome, and if it does seem like it's in good hands. So I don't want to undermine any of the work that has been done. But this, it came to me through Deputy Chief Steve Aiello, and then just started working on it as effectively as I could. So that's one.
Thank you, Counselor.
Keolis, Keolis has stepped up on this, in this regard, and hopefully they can step up on the outbound train as well.
And going forward, I think it'd be great if we can keep our questions funneled through the clerk's office, so we can have them all accumulated, and then send them on to Senator Tar, so we can have cohesiveness and collaboration with everything that we do. So that would be my ask to all of you counselors. So that's great. Counsel O'Neill?
Is anybody else getting feedback? That's strange.
I am, yeah.
Right, just asking.
I'm going to mute in the event it's coming for me.
Okay, I don't hear the, I don't hear the interference anymore. So any other questions, further questions, counselors? So, who has their hand raised? I don't see any hands raised. So, oh, Counsel O'Hara.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Tar, Mr. Costa. Counsel Worthley, appreciate you giving us an update on your extensive review. That's extremely helpful. As Senator Tar has mentioned, this is an extreme safety issue. You know, the people who know of the issue, as we all know, Washington Street is an extremely busy street. And to have cars knowingly know that there's a problem at the gate crossing intentionally slow down, because they don't know what's going to happen. They don't want to be the one to get hit by the gates going up and down with, without a train or with a train, can create major, major, major problems. Liability, I'm sure, for, obviously, the MBTA, the state, who knows, who else. But, Senator, do we have a timeline on some sort of report, some sort of resolution that we can make public to our constituents, so that they can feel safe, that they're not doing what's happening in Wilmington and I'm sure what's happening at Washington Street? And that's slowing down when there's no need to slow down.
Senator, do you want to respond to Counsel?
Absolutely. And Counselor, it's good to see you, but I appreciate the question. Still hearing some interference. I'm not sure where it's coming from. I thought it might be me. But Counselor, we, number one, as Counselor Worthley indicated, and this is an important point, the preliminary review from the MBTA and Keolis indicates that the crossing signals are working properly. So it's important to say that. I don't have a timeframe relative to the further review. I would, I don't even want to speculate, but I would say it would be as much as a month. And whatever we have, Counselor, we will share through the council president and the mayor, so that everybody has it, and it can be shared with constituents. I can't emphasize enough how important communication is here. We need to communicate to the public when we know something, so that we can make sure that we maintain public trust and that people act accordingly. So while I don't have a specific timeframe, Counselor, when we have anything, we will channel it to you so that it can be shared with constituents. And I think it's important that we all speak with one voice on this, and we all get all of the answers to all of our questions, because in our respective roles, we are accountable to the public, and this is a matter of public safety.
So I would add to that comment that Jeff and Steve, you've done a lot of research, and as you come up with questions, make sure that you're part of that question compilation that we're going to be keeping at the city clerk's office, because that is going to be sent to Senator Tar the end of the day on Thursday. And so, from the mayor's office, and we're going to be able to, that will be the list of questions we're going to ask the MBTA to address. So let's all listen to our constituents, and as we hear, and we ask. And as we hear, um, and we ask technical questions that we feel need to be answered, but just don't feel right, or we need some follow-up. Let's get that information to Joanne by the close of business on Thursday so we can really get our arms around this. So, um, so that's a process that I would just like to outline to everyone. Um, so I think we're ready to summarize. Counsel Worthy, you had your hand raised, so, um.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'll be brief. Um, thank you again. I think this has been very helpful. I think, like Senator Tar is saying, the one message that I think also has to be clear is that in no circumstance is it safe to be parked or stay, uh, uh, neutral or stopped on a track? So if there's a situation where gates are up and you're going, if you can't get past the the track, don't be creeping up to be there. That hasn't been the problem in terms of trains coming, but gates are falling and cars are in the wrong spot. So I think the message, as Senator Tar is saying, is safety first. Don't go across the track, even if it looks safe, until you know that there's room to get all the way across. That's the message that Keolis has said to me loud and clearly, and I think we should all be saying the same message there.
Thank you. And Senator Tar, would you correct me if I'm wrong? The whole issue of signage is is a requirement from the federal government, correct?
My understanding, Madam President, is that the FRA governs what you can have for signage. Um, there is some latitude with that, but but that, again, is something that I think we need to have further consultation with the MBTA about, um, in terms of signage. But I do want to stress what Counsel Worthy just said. If there was one takeaway message for the public tonight, and this has been stressed by the MBTA and Keolis, do not attempt to cross through the grade crossing unless it's clear that you can get to the other side. Um, it it's not a thing where you want to chance it or try to see if you can make it through. If if you cannot clear the grade crossing, do not attempt to navigate it. Stop. And and that is a really important message, and that may be something that signage could help with. But again, there there are there are requirements that are imposed by the federal government. We need to make sure we understand what they are before we can think about what we might be able to do on that front.
Thank you so much, Senator. Any further questions, Counsel O'Hara?
Well, I can't say as I feel too comfortable with this grade crossing. Um, Counsel Worthy, I want to thank you for your in-depth research with Keolis and and other parties. Um, what what you have said, I think Senator Tar just reconfirmed, is we have one of these deals. We don't know what's going on. So the motoring public, our constituents, that that know that there's a problem will probably be driving up to the the crossing, stopping, looking, similar to what a bus would do or an oil truck. Stop, look, listen, and proceed. Um, that's not a safe situation, and and there's obviously a problem. This problem did not exist prior to the the upgrades taking place, the bridge obviously being replaced, which was much longer than the the public anticipated. Um, uh, obviously, we're not gonna solve this tonight. None of us are educated enough to to speak on this, but, uh, this isn't a good situation. Um, I I did, I'm not comfortable with with what's going on, the fact that Keolis or MBTA, who ultimately is the owner, they they contract with Keolis to operate. Um, I know they don't, they don't plan on putting someone at the grade crossing, but possibly that might be what needs to happen until they figure this out because to have people stopping at the grade crossing, you know, we're saying, well, don't proceed with single track, I believe, at Washington Street. Um, the trains are moving extremely slowly. But nonetheless, it this this sounds like it's it's a recipe for 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 continued problems. Um, thank you.
Thank you, counselors. Okay, I think, um, I think we're ready to move to the next order of business. So on behalf of our council, Senator Tar, Ted Costa, and Mayor Verga, thank you for making this a top priority. Um, I was pleased that on a day when someone jumped off the Mystic River Bridge because of a fire that um, that we were able to get four top leaders, um, to have a meeting with us. So, um, let's keep up the good, the good inquiries and and questions and detail and follow-up. And, um, let's let's work together to solve this. So thank you, and thank you, um, Counsel Worthy and Steve Viallo for your efforts and Tracy O'Neill. So I think we're ready to move on. So next order of business, Madam Clerk. Go ahead, Senator.
Thank you all very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ted.
Madam President, were you gonna take something out of order?
Yes, without objections, uh, counselors, I'd like to take City Council two thousand twenty-two oh two-one. It's a simple for council vote out of order. Um, so with no objections, um, Madam Clerk, would you introduce that topic? Thank you.
It's for council vote, City Council Order two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-one Gilman. Pursuant to Chapter ninety-two of the Acts of twenty-two, ordered that the City Council, in consultation with its election officers and registrars, vote to detail a sufficient number of police officers or constables for each building that contains the polling place of one or more precincts, and vote to delegate the authority as to who the specific police officers or constables uh, to the city clerk and to the police chief acting in coordination for the September sixth, two thousand twenty-two, and November eighth, two thousand twenty-two state election.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I would like to introduce some of our folks that are on the Board of Registars. Craig Anderson, Dan Epstein, and Lucy Sheehan. I don't see her.
She's under Arthur. Arthur Sheehan.
Okay, Arthur Sheehan. Okay, hi Lucy. So we have, um, three guests here, and I just wanted to, I would wanted to just introduce them to to you. Uh, Madam Clerk, do you have anything to explain to the counselors before we we make our motion in terms of what their role is and being here today?
Okay, so in, um, on June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, Governor Baker signed the the Votes Act that was presented and passed by the Senate and the House. And in that, uh, there's a new law that requires, um, cities and towns to have a police detail at each polling location. Okay, and for the safety, um, for the safety of the, you know, of the officers, uh, the poll workers, the election workers, um, and to aid in enforcing the related election laws. So that is a requirement now, um, before it was optional. Uh, but now, since that went into effect and on the order, it said for the the upcoming elections. But the motion would be for all elections going forward. It's a permanent change. So, um, in order, and we had to vote this at least six weeks in advance of the September sixth primary election. And once this is voted through, we would have fulfilled this part of our council, uh, of the election law. And, um, so we're here tonight with the Board of Registars. Um, I did in advance, um, send the Board of Registars the new law, the Complete, um, Votes Act, but also the section of, um, the new law that pertains to, um, the police details at every polling location.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So without objection, I think we're ready to make the motion. So I move to approve a sufficient number of police officers at the polling locations at every election there in to preserve order and to protect the election officers and supervisors from any interference with their duties and to aid in enforcing the laws relating to elections as required by Section seventy-two of Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-four, which was changed in Section thirteen of Chapter ninety-two of the Acts of two thousand twenty-two. Further move to designate the authority as to who the specific police officers or constables are to the city clerk and to the police chief acting in coordination. And I so move.
Second.
Okay, Gilman made the motion. It was seconded by Counsel Worthy. Is there discussion, counselors? Counsel Grow.
Um. Less a discussion than and and more a, uh, a question. Um, we talked about how many officers are gonna be needed at each precinct and the cost, where the where the cost is gonna be picked up on this?
Um, Madam Clerk, would you respond? Because I know you've spoken to Chief Conley about that.
Sorry. Okay, so we have five wards, ten precincts, but two precincts are combined. So we would need at least eight constables or police officers. This is an unfunded mandate again. Um, it was late. Uh, we've already passed our budget. Um, the last time in two thousand twenty, when, um, the Secretary of State's office suggested and recommended that we have police officers for the presidential election. It, um, we had police officers at every polling location from seven in the morning till eight at night. And that cost the city, um, well, we had to come up with money at that time, uh, transferring from another account, uh, around four thousand dollars. It's, um, it's, I would say it's an estimated cost right now because it all depends on who's assigned, um, what their rate of pay is, if it's a superior, if it's a lieutenant, if it's a regular patrolman. Um, so in two thousand twenty, the cost to the city was four thousand dollars. Um, I might anticipate it a little, being a little higher. And because, only because of two elections now. Last time, it was only for the November presidential election. Now we're talking about primaries and the regular election, September and November.
Thank you. Follow-up question from Counsel Grow.
You muted.
Counsel Grow, you.
All right. Um, are we also talking about municipal elections and and preliminary race?
Yes. Yes, it's it's all for state primary.
Re-election movement.
Every, every election. Going forward.
And because it's for everyone, we've taken the wording, and we've just said every election in the motion. Consistent with the law. Any other questions, counselors, before we do a roll call vote? Seeing none. Counsel Gross.
Tony.
What?
We don't have a choice, right?
No. We cannot opt out of this. There are other things that we can opt out for a local election, but this law, we cannot opt out of. No.
Okay.
Glad you have a sense of humor. Thank you. So, uh, Counsel Gross, did I hear your vote?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Counsel Grow.
Mandatory, yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Mandatory, yes.
Counsel Nolan is not here. Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthy.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman. Yes, the yeses have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Thank you. Thank you, Joanne, for your hard work. I know this has been a lot of organization and a lot of research, so very much appreciated.
And I'd like to thank, thank the Board of Registars for being here tonight. Um, I am also a registrar, so there's three board members and myself. We, um, we are, we have a composition of the Board of Registars for the city and the election officials. So thank you very much for attending tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig, Dan, and Lucy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is confirmation of new appointments.
Okay, and Counsel Nolan is not here, so I'm gonna let, uh, Counsel O'Hara, Vice President of O N A, um, do these, uh, new appointments. Counsel O'Hara. Counsel O'Hara, if you want me to help out with the motions, I'm happy to. I don't know if you have your desktop in front of you. Okay, so I'm gonna serve as the motion maker on this. So the first new appointment that came out of O N A is for Gretel Sealy, Gloucester Economic and Development Industrial Corp. And a term to be expired is July first, two thousand and twenty-five. Just a note that Ms. Sealy is traveling, is not available to attend tonight's meeting for confirmation of her appointment. She won't be available until the August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two city council meeting. Um, we can continue this until August twenty-third at the city council meeting or without objection of the city council, we can move forward and approve this appointment. Are there any objections to moving forward? Seeing none. Um, Mayor Verga, do you want to speak on her behalf? And then I will, um, turn it back to Counsel O'Hara to, um.
Sure. Uh, yeah, so so Gretel volunteered for this position, uh, months ago, uh, awaiting Ruth Pino's term to end because Ruth had indicated to me in January that she was not gonna seek reappointment. So Gretel's sort of been, uh, the understudy for a long time, and it's worth mentioning, she was an active member of the Opera Listening Group. Um, so she is ready to hit the ground running as soon as she returns from Canada and, um, very excited about the position. And I think, um, the field she's in, she's in a manufacturing, uh, sales of a manufacturing company. She'll be a great fit for the EDIC.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Counsel O'Hara, would you like to do the committee report to, um, to move to, um, appoint Gretel?
Certainly. Uh, this. On a motion by Counsel O'Hara, seconded by Counselor Majota, the Orange Administration Committee voted by a roll call vote, three in favors or opposed to recommend that the City Council appoint Gretel Sealy to the Gloucester Economic Development Incorporated, uh, term ending July first, two thousand twenty-five, and I so move.
Second.
Um, motion was made by Counsel O'Hara, and I I didn't hear who made the.
You can give it to Jeff.
Okay, it's your birthday, Jeff. We'll give you the second. Second is by Counsel Worthy. Is there a further discussion on Gretel? Seeing none. A roll call vote. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yep.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard. Scott, Counsel Memard.
Technical difficulties.
I think the heat must just be affecting our video. Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Oh, great. Counsel Nolan is not here. Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthy.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman. Yes, the yeses have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Thank you. Um, Counsel O'Hara, the next, um, appointment.
Sure. Um, the, um, on a motion by, let's see, Counselor O'Hara, seconded by Counsel Majota, the Orange Administration, voted three in favors or opposed to recommend that the City Council appoint Stephen LeBlanc to the Shellfish Advisory Commission, term ending February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and I so move.
Second.
Counsel made by Counsel, um, motion made by Counsel O'Hara, seconded by Counsel Worthy. Is there discussion, counselors? Um, Mayor Verga.
Yeah, it came with my tradition of just saying a few words about new appointments. Uh, this is a man who needs no introduction, I'm sure. But a- as we know, Steve is the current chair of the Waterways Board. Um, he was involved with the City Council in some way, I think, recently. And, um, he it's a good, uh, match, you know, to have. We try not to put people on multiple boards, um, but we also don't have a lot of volunteers. But when the multiple boards are somewhat related, it's a no-brainer. Steve is, uh, a claiming, uh, has a claiming license, and, um, I think he's a good fit for this. He'd be dedicated, and will do a great job for our city.
Thank you, Mayor Verga. So we have a motion that was made by. So we have a motion that was made by Council O'Hara and was seconded by Council Worthley. Is there anyone else that would like to discuss? Seeing none, roll call vote. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan is absent. Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neal.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman. Yes, the yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The next order of business is the consent agenda.
Counselors, would anyone does anyone wish to pull any matter off the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Council Memard, second. Is there? Council Gross, seconded. Roll call vote. Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Majota.
Yes.
Memard.
Yes.
Nolan is absent. O'Hara.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Worthley.
Yes.
And Gilman. Yes, the yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk. Up what? Mayor Verga.
I just want to let you know I'm signing off. Thank you, guys, for allowing me to join you this evening. Have a great. Enjoy the next four hours of your meeting.
Thank you. We'll be done before that. Don't worry.
I gotta buy my Lotto ticket.
That's right. That's right.
So Madam Clerk, next order of business.
It is in the unanimous consent agenda.
Counselors, would anyone like to remove any matters off the unanimous consent agenda? I would just not like to remove it, but I would just like to mention that one of the matters is a Q and A that was done on Dogtown by our C A O. And I wanted to put this in the packet. And when the Dogtown Preservation Commission is able to meet again, right now, we don't have a licensed host. So we are on hold to meet again. But once we are meeting again, this Q and A will be on that agenda. And I appreciate the C A O doing that. So it's in the packet. It's on the website if anyone wants to see that. So that's it for the unanimous consent agenda. And we will, is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Council Worthley, and I think it was seconded by, was that Council Majota? Was that you?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So we have a motion and a second and we'll do a roll call vote. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard. Council Memard.
Yeah.
All right, we got a yes. It's good. Council Nolan is absent. Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neal.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman. Yes, yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The next order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Reporting Report of July 21st.
And I will turn control of the meeting over to our B and F Chair, Councilor Memard.
Thank you. Hopefully, the internet will stay with me. We've got four or five matters for your consideration this evening from Budget and Finance. The first is a memorandum from the Development Director Fiscal Year 2020 2023 Community Development Block Grant $698,570, as well as a home H O M E allocation. Would you like me to go ahead and make the motion?
Um, please.
Madam President.
Yes, Council Grow.
For the sake of the recording and the ongoing record of this, do you think we could have the Vice Chair read this out? No offense, Scott, you're you're getting about one out of every three words out.
I was just thinking that that would be a good idea. So I think everyone heard this this motion clearly, kind of. What do you want?
Yeah.
Okay.
Doesn't make it. That's okay.
Okay, great. So Council Gross as Vice Chair. Would you read the committee recommendation?
Sure. So this is memorandum from the interim Community Development Director. Fiscal Year 22 to oh. I don't know what the P Y means. F Y twenty, what is it? Where the Community Development Block Grant allocation in the amount of 698,570 and home allocation in the amount of 125,710. On a motion by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Gross, the Budget Finance Committee voted by roll call, three in three in favors, zero opposed to recommend that the City Council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, federal grants in the amount of 698,570 for Community Development Block Grant from the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development for the program year 2022 fiscal year 2023 and the home grant for the North Shore Home Consortium for Program Year 2022 and Fiscal Year 2023 in the amount of 125,710, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Gross, seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a further discussion, counselors? Council O'Neal and then Council Worthley.
And then just.
Just a quick question. What does H O M E stand for? I mean, all the HUD and C D B G is all. But there's no.
Trying to find that for you, Tracy.
Oh, okay.
Kenny Coster or John Dunn, if you know that acronym, and you can unmute yourself.
Just curious. Sorry.
All right.
Shouldn't be questioning receiving money, huh?
On the HUD, on the HUD webpage, Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Yep, go ahead, Council Grow.
Partnership's program.
What?
Oh, it's the home. It's not even an acronym. It's the home. There we go.
Yeah.
So it's not even an acronym. It's it's for home.
Their program.
I was on.
The North Shore Home Consortium.
Yes. Kenny Coster, can you can you confirm that that is?
But it's it's home. It's home investment partnership. It's it's the home.
Great. Council Grow, not even on B and F, and you got that one. That's a jeopardy win. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Council Worthley, did you have your hand raised?
Yes, I just want to use this moment unless Council Memard's back to promote how effective and how meaningful this program is. And I'll defer to Council Memard if he's back up and running here, if that's what he was hoping to do.
Council Memard, would you like to speak on behalf of this as B and F Chair?
You just let me know if I'm not coming through, but I just wanted to thank Jamie Corliss for her presentation and welcome her back to the City of Gloucester, and she did a very thorough Q and A with the counselors on Budget and Finance. And I invite all of you to, if you haven't, or the public, to rewatch that on our Zoom meeting from last Thursday evening.
Thank you. Any other discussion before we vote on this? Seeing none, Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard. Council Memard. Yeah, all right. Council Nolan is absent. Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neal.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman. Yes, yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business from B and F. We will let Vice Chair Tony Gross take the lead.
All right. Next order of business was we got a memorandum from the Director of Information Services requesting the acceptance of a Massachusetts community compact cabinet municipal fiber grant in the amount of 459,671.75. On a motion by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Gross, the Budget and Finance Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, a state grant from the Executive Office for Administration and Finance for F Y 22 Community Compact Cabinet Municipal Fiber Grant Program in the amount of 459,672 for the purpose of supporting and closing of critical gaps in municipal networks and connecting municipal owned facilities to assist municipalities. The grant period is from June 7th, 2022, through September 30th, 2023, and there is a 5% local match required, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Gross, seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a discussion, counselors?
You want to go ahead.
Go ahead, Council Worthley.
You guys think that what Council Grow was saying, Gross was saying, go ahead to, is we are very lucky to have Ryan Knowles, who basically initiated looking for this and got this grant, coordinated with all the cities and towns around us to extend fiber optic cable, which might make it easier for our Zoom meetings to work going forward, and hopefully it gets to East Gloucester and where I am right now. But Ryan did a fantastic job. The the committee meeting was very robust. We asked good questions, and he was very on on top of everything. We should be very thankful that we have this money coming in. The 5% match is is miniscule compared to what we're getting for this grant, so.
Great. Thank you. Council Gross.
Yeah, this is this is really municipal fiber, and we'll be going to residential. And it it connects the loop from Danvers all the way through. We loops connects Gloucester, Essex, Manchester. So the municipalities then have, through their emergency services, have access to this and also you know, and it also gets rid of redundancies that own cities and towns don't have to have their own separate you know, sort of municipal broadband. This is part of this whole thing. So it what it does, it completes a loop with the greater greater metropolitan area.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion, counselors?
Specifically.
Go ahead. Council Memard.
Rockport. I if you hear me, it's specifically going to connect the loop to Rockport and to Essex, and it involves actually laying fiber cable through Gloucester, connecting to Rockport and back over to Essex.
Great, thank you, counselor. We heard you. So appreciate it. Okay, roll call vote. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yeah.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan is absent. Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neal.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman. Yes, the yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Council Gross.
Our next order of business is a memorandum from the Public Health Director requesting acceptance of an upward amendment to the Mass Call 3 Grant for Substance Misuse Prevention. On a motion by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Gross, the Budget and Finance Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the City Council accept under Mass General Law 44, Section 53A, a contract amendment to the federal grant, excuse me, from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration and pass through the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, Bureau of Substance Addiction Services, and F Y 23 Massachusetts Collaborative for Action Leadership and Learning 3, Mass Call 3, Substance Misuse Prevention Program Grant in the amount of 241,666 for a total F Y 23 amount of 366,666. The total contract maximum obligation is 491,666 with no lack, no local match requirements. The purpose of this grant is to support the Regional Youth Prevention Network to prevent the and reduce the use of substances and delay first use among regional youth. Youth. This grant period is from July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2023, and I so move.
Thank you.
A motion made by Council Gross and seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a narrative or discussion, counselors?
So this is, you know, we already had the grant, but they just increased it significantly. To so that's that's what this is. It's a grant we already have that, you know, is about prevention. This is not about this is intervention, I believe, is how they do it, you know, early intervention, not intervention after after the horse is out of the barn or whatever.
Right. Thank you, counselor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard. Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan is absent. Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neal. Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman. Yes, the yeses have it, eight in favor, one is absent. Thank you. If you would continue, Council Gross.
Yeah, I think we only have one more. Yep. Memorandum from General Counsel requesting to pay a fiscal year 22 invoices with fiscal year 23 funds. On a motion by Councilor Memard, seconded by Councilor Gross, the Budget and Finance Committee voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 64, approve payment of previous year's invoices with current year funds for two invoices. One from M C L E, New England, which is Mass Association Mass something legal. Anyway, invoice number 885013 in the amount of 133.50 dated April 30th, 2022. And one invoice is from Lawyers Weekly Incorporated, invoice number 454. And for 660 dated June 28th, 2022, to be paid with F Y 23 General Fund Law Department budgeted funds in the total of 793.50. The big one had to do with advertising for the the legal, the assistant legal.
Okay, thank you. And can you move it?
Oh, and I so move. Sorry.
Zero seconds.
Out of practice.
Second.
Council Gross made the motion, and it was seconded by Council O'Neal. Is there any narrative?
Just the Lawyers Weekly was to advertise for the the assistant legal position that's open.
Yeah. Great. Excellent. So roll call vote, counselors. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan is absent. Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neal.
Yes.
Council Worthley. Gilman. Yes, the yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. Thank you, Council Gross and B and F. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the Ordnance and Administration Standing Committee Report of July 18.
Council O'Hara. Would you like to make the recommendation coming out of subcommittee?
Yes. Orson Administration on a motion by Council O'Hara, seconded by Council Major to the. By Council O'Hara, seconded by Council Majota, the ordinance administration committee voted. By roll call vote of three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the City Council adopt the Human Rights. Commission's proposed amendments to the two thousand and twenty City Council Civility Resolution. I'll read the resolution if you like.
That would be great. Thank you, counselor.
Sure. Whereas this Gloucester, uh, whereas the Gloucester community. Is a unique and special one with a long history. We recognize. The need to work towards an inclusive and equitable community. Whereas in collaboration with the mayor and city administration, the City Council is proud to continue our. Community spirit by honoring our commitments to inclusive activity. Equity and safety for all in our community, especially those who have historically been. Discriminated against, ignored, or marginalized. Whereas any acts of violence, discrimination, or harassment. Do not reflect the values of Gloucester community and will not be tolerated. We are committed to examine ourselves, our community, and to eradicate any instances of intolerance, whereas. It is the finding of the City of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or. Opportunity as a result of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including. Intellectual and developmental, mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity, or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race. Religion, sex or sexual orientation, whereas it is the policy of City of Gloucester to uphold. Human rights of all persons in Gloucester. In the free exercise and enjoyment of any and all privileges viewed by the constitutional laws, ordinance, and regulations of the United States. Commonwealth, Massachusetts, and the City of Gloucester, whereas any such actions. That may deny or tend to deny. To an individual equal access or opportunity to matters of housing, employment, education, municipal services, contract purchasing. Or public accommodation on the basis of age, ancestry, color, disability, family, status, gender. Identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex or sexual orientation. They are hereby prohibited, whereas the city hu, or whereas the Gloucester Human Rights Commission takes. Seriously all complaints and allegations regarding discrimination and human rights violations and will forward them to the city administration. And if necessary, to the proper legal authorities to investigate and resolve. Whereas the Gloucester Police Department is committed. To taking all allegations seriously and will work diligently, diligently to investigate. Any claims of discrimination. Therefore, the underside agreed to the tenants laid forth in this document, I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council O'Hara and seconded by Council Worthy. Is there a discussion, councilors? Council Worthy.
I just want to draw, first of all, I support this hundred percent. I'd like to recognize that Council Grow played a significant role in working with the. Humans Rights Commission, is that what it is?
Yes.
We also.
Council Worthy, you're frozen again. Council Worthy. Council Worthy. Okay.
You were saying nice things about me though.
Yeah.
Council Worthy, we know you're saying something nice about Council Grow, but we can't hear you, so.
Once in a blue moon, right? The Human Rights Commission to bring this forward and edit it.
Yeah.
For that, but we also received an email from Mayor Verga. I'm not sure if everyone is reading that email during the meeting as well, but. He states here, he watched the discussion at the last O and A meeting on this topic and fully support adoption by the full city council. And that he'd also like to sign on the final document as well, so I just thought.
Right.
Give him the recognition for supporting this and add his voice to this.
Great, and so I would, I would add him as a signature. I think that's great. Any other further discussion, councilors? Council Grow.
I'm, just want to uh thank Hannah Kimberly and the entire Gloucester Human Rights Commission. Uh, one for, for stepping up and be, and being that board. It's not a. Not, there's, there's, it's a tricky board because it's one of those places where we feel like. In some respects, we shouldn't need to have it, but we do, obviously, because we haven't quite got to where we need to be, but. Uh, they are very committed to uh the mission of, of parroting out and trying to eliminate as much bias and. And uh, discrimination and, and, and that we can in our community and I, I. Just want to recognize them for their contributions to the discussion and for. Putting forward a really good edit, I think, of, of the, the civility agreement. I mean. There was, there was, there was nothing wrong with the previous one. It just didn't seem to have enough teeth, and I think the fact that. We've added the number seven, we're, about the uh taking complaints seriously and allegations. As I mentioned at the O and A meeting, we don't, the Gloucester Human Rights Commission does not have the authority to. To enforce anything, but what it can do and, and as a body, it, it intends to do. Is to take seriously complaints that come to it and direct people to the proper authorities to handle issues. In a timely manner so that, that people don't, aren't left floating alone. Out in the wilderness that they've been discriminated against or had some sort of action against them and they don't know where to turn. So I think that's probably the best. Uh, reason to have this is it gives people a place to go and I'm, I'm really glad that the council is gonna be supporting this tonight. As well as the mayor.
Great, thank you. Any further comments, councilors? Seeing none, Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Absolutely.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memart.
Yes.
Council Nolan is absent, Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neal.
Yes.
Council Worthy.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes, the S's have it eight in favor. One absent and a reminder, councilors, please, let's try to get down to City Hall in the next week so we can all sign this. And we can get it updated on the website. That would be great. We're, we've been, it's been taking longer than we'd like when we're trying to sign all these agreements. Um, but we'd like to get this one on it and it will. Make the Human Rights Commission feel proud to know that we made it a priority to get down to City Hall. For some reason, you can't get down there, let me know. I'll see that somebody can drive it to you, but it's really important. So thank you so much. Um, thank you. Council Grow as well for your work on this.
Excuse me, Madam President, what's the earliest that we can go down and sign?
Great question. I have to look at um, Madam Clark because they've been so busy in City Hall. Joey, and when do you think you could have this final um version ready for signatures?
Nine AM tomorrow morning.
Oh my gosh, you are so awesome. Thank you. Okay. All right, next order of business, um, Council O'Hara. Council O'Hara. Committee recommendations.
Sorry, yeah, I had my mic, I'm sorry.
Okay, not a problem, go ahead.
Okay, so this is uh, CC twenty-twenty-two dash zero-one-four. Um, proposed by President Gilman, amend City Council Rules of Procedure by adding Rule nineteen, request to seek information from city staff. City Council Recommendation on a Motion by Council O'Hara, seconded by Council Majota, the ordinance administration committee. Voted by roll call, two in favor, one opposed, O'Hara. To recommend that the City Council amend the City Council Rules of Procedure. Twenty-twenty-one by adding Rule nineteen, request to seek information from city staff. There are two ways to seek information from city staff. A request to mayor, any request that requires the department heads to run customer reports, spend time to research an issue. Or to meet with a city counselor on a specified matter. All requests must copy the mayor, C A O, and city clerk. Requests to the mayor can be submitted. At the end of our city council meetings. Or weekly and submitted to the clerk's office at the end of the day on Thursdays. Or, in the case of an urgent request. A council may submit an email request directly to the mayor, provided the city clerk is copied. A quarterly report of all weekly requests to the mayor. Is maintained by the clerk of committees and is submitted to the office of the mayor and city councilors. Two, request to the city department heads. Any inquiry that can be answered in a short, short response or email without research. Or simple yes or no answers. This is more prevalent for ward councils who have a follow-up. City department question from a constituent. It is the councillor's responsibility to read up on G C O, G Z O. Or budget matter in question prior to reaching out to a department head. Quick questions can be submitted or asked. Via city email, which should copy the director of communications and constituent services. By office phone. Text should be last resort only in an urgent situation to issued, city-issued. Phone numbers only. Inquiries should be made during the work week unless it is an urgent matter. Councillors are reminded that the city clerk and city auditor are the only two positions. That report to the city council, and I so move.
I'll second it. Council O'Hara, I made the motion and Council Gilman seconded. I also have an amendment and I'm not sure if we want to introduce that tonight or if we want to just take care of this tonight. And then bring this back at the next meeting, so I'm willing to um entertain that I hold on the amendment. Um, and, and do that at, at the next meeting. Any objection with that? Um, Council Grow, do you have an objection to that? Go ahead.
Um. I didn't want to be the fly in the ointment tonight, um. I would actually suggest that we hold off for the next meeting because we're dealing with. An issue about our communication with the administration and we have no rep. From the administration on this call to discuss what the issues are, what the problems are, um, if they are problems, um. I know it seems like a pretty straightforward thing, but it, it does uh. Create a new, well, it codifies what I think essentially is what we do now. But I wonder if we shouldn't hold off for two weeks and, and ask the mayor or Jill Cahill to, to sit in and, and have uh, a proper discussion about this.
I'm fine with that, plus it will, um, it will allow, go, go ahead.
I was gonna say, it's not time sensitive, I don't think, in terms of.
No, it's, it's not, and I did kind of throw the third part of this out today and it will. Get, give us all an opportunity to the amendment, uh, to kind of absorb that, um. You know, I, I, I would, I would say, as this is my order, um, I would say that. This administration is trying to make sure that our requests get addressed. So, rather than ignoring them, they are really trying hard to. Actually take care of them somehow, and so we're trying to come up with. These rules, um, that are part of our rules of procedure for how we govern. Um, to help us make sure that. Um, we are all on the same page, so that's why we're putting this forward. So, without objection, I'm fine to hold this until the next meeting. Council Worthy, you have a question?
Yes, I object in the sense that the mayor was at the ordinance administration committee. His position was being, being known very clear. It's in the minutes and it's on the Zoom meeting.
Oh.
Let him come back to a council meeting. You know, we got to honor the work that the standing committee did to sort of be the um, working group for this. So if, if we need to summarize his position on that, um. We can pull the minutes and take a look at that quickly, but I don't see. Success, I think it's excessive to have to continue this and wait for the administration, where he made his, his points very clear.
Council Gross.
I, I, I think that this definitely, absolutely needs to have, um, because there's going to be. New territory touched on, that was a three-member subcommittee, not the full council. This is a full council, um. Not initiative, but a full council, it affects the, the full council. And I think absolutely the, the administration needs to be represented here, um. You know, this also is charter. I think maybe legal should be here too. Um, you know, the charter is very clear on how we communicate with um, city staff. And um, so.
Okay, that's fine with me. Um, Council Grow.
But in that case, I'll formalize a motion to continue this until the next uh, full city council meeting and request that. City administration and legal be represented, represented in the conversation.
And I will second that, um, so um, motion made. Seconded by Gilman, made by Grow, um, roll call vote, Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memart. Council.
Yes.
Council Nolan is absent, Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neal.
Yes.
Council Worthy.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Eight in favor, zero, one absent. Next order of business, Jamie O'Hara.
One second, let me get here. CC two-twenty. Uh, dash zero-two-zero, Gilman Grow, amend. City Council Rules of Procedures, Rule Number Two. Orders of Business by inserting a new subsection two. Non-discrimination Statement Opener for City Council Meetings. Committee Recommendation on a Motion by Council O'Hara, seconded by Council Majota, the ordinance administration voted. By roll call, two in favor. One opposed, O'Hara to recommend that the City Council amend the City Council Rules of Procedures. Two thousand and twenty-one by adding a new subsection. Two Discrimination Statement Opener for City Council Meetings to read as follows. It is the finding of the City of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability. Including intellectual and develop, developmental, mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender, identity, or expression. Military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. In this vein, we as the city councillors do not condone language that is discriminatory or offensive and. Will not accept it at city co, city meetings, and I so move.
Second.
Um, motion made by Council O'Hara, seconded by Council Grow. Is there a discussion on this?
Just a point of information, is the vote on whether or not we. The council president reads that statement as part of the meeting or is it?
Yes.
Different than what we voted on, just questionable whether you.
It's just part, it just becomes part of the content of our meeting.
I understand.
And um, and I did time this, actually, I, I will have to correct myself. Council O'Hara, I told you that it was twenty-four seconds at O and A. Um, it's actually thirty seconds um, for me to read this, so I did time it and I was using the same exact pace that I usually. Read things, um, Council Grow, your, your hand was raised.
Yeah, I, I, I want to acknowledge that there was some concern about why we need to do this at every meeting and I just want to reiterate what I said at O and A, which is that. I wish we didn't have to do this at every meeting, but I think what it sends is sends a message um, on a regular basis. Clear and, and, and uh. Concisely that this kind of behavior, this kind of language, this kind of um. Uh, treatment, no, it's not acceptable at our city council meetings and. It just basically says, this is who we are, this is who we want to be, and. Um, I fully support it. I don't think it takes too much time to acknowledge. That we uh, we don't accept this kind of behavior and I think it just sends a great message uh, to the city in general.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Council Majota?
I just want to say I agree with Council Grow, uh, I think we waste more time in. You know, asking people to unmute themselves or whatever, so um, thirty seconds in the beginning of the meeting. In the grand scheme of things, it's not a, not a lot of time at all, so. I fully support this and um, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Uh, Council O'Neal and then Council O'Hara.
Yes, um, where would this go?
Where would this go in subsection two? I have the rules of procedure right here in front of me. I have rule number one. I don't, I don't know what a subsection, what subsection two would go.
We don't have that rules of procedure on the desktop to screen share. So it's in our rules of procedure, it lays out how our agenda looks.
Right, I, I have it. I just don't know where you're gonna put that. I, I also. I don't know. I mean, I, to me. To me, it's understood, you know, and I just think. I just think it's understood and I think it's just. Honestly, I think it's unnecessary. I mean, it's, I mean, we respect all people. And to me, it's understood. So I'm not quite sure why we need to put it in, in, on every single meeting that we have. I just, it seems a bit much to me. That's all. And I don't know where you would put it. I have the printout.
It would, I mean, and just looking at the template. It would probably go right after the legal language, which is talking about Zoom. And then the next order of business would be that announcement. Is that correct, Joanne? I don't have the policy in.
It's under rule two, order of business. So number one is usually the flag salute in moment of silence where we're not at city hall. And number two would be the oral communications because we're doing remote. You would have to read the legal language for remote meetings. So it would go after the legal language of the remote meeting's legal language. And then everything else would be renumbered accordingly if this passes.
Right. So there's a second, there's a second motion that just renumbers it. So we're consistent. Okay, so let's, let, let, let's, any further discussion councillors? Councillor O'Hara?
Yes, I, I want to support what Councillor O'Neill just mentioned. I, you know, we are elected officials. We are professionals. We, we practice this, we live this on a daily basis. And, and I, I think, I, I, I agree one hundred percent that the, the, the words are, are a, a definitely something that we live by, that everyone should live by. But I, I don't think it's, it's necessary. Possibly we amend it and, and at, at when we're sworn in, we take the oath. But, but I, I, I think, you know, reading it in, in each and every meeting is not necessary. Obviously, as time progresses, this statement will certainly become outdated. As, as time goes on, but I, I, I think it's gonna be something that's not gonna, not gonna sink in. And, and just, just the mere fact that we live this daily as, as elected officials. We are voices of the people. I, I don't think it's, it's necessary that, that we, we spend thirty seconds reiterating this fact every day or every meeting, because again, we live it each and every day, at least I do. And I'm sure all, all nine, nine of us or eight other colleagues on the city council, employees of the city, you name it, we, we live this. And I, I just think it is, it is not necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Worthley and then Councillor Grow.
Yes, I'm gonna agree with Councillor O'Hara O'Neill on one part of this, which is that I don't think any of us are discriminating or mistreating people. And I think we are professionals. I also will be supporting this motion though. If you are in the shoes of one of the marginalized communities. You don't know that when you sign on to a meeting. And this isn't just for us, for our behavior. This is also for people who are attending the meeting to make it very clear at the beginning that we won't tolerate that and give us the real power to stop that conversation the second we all see it, any of us see it. And I think if you put yourself in the shoes of someone who's been marginalized, and maybe that's hard to do for some of us, and I don't mean that negatively. We want to welcome them. We want to make people, I'm not sure you say them, we should welcome everybody and make everyone feel like they're part of our city and that they're represented. And if all it takes is thirty seconds to convey that message. That's the difference maker for the people who feel that way. And in a perfect world, and I think we are doing exceptionally well with this. Councillor O'Neill specifically, I don't, I don't think our, this council is the problem. But this isn't the same council that's gonna be there for all eternity, thankfully, for all of us. And I think we need to set the precedent that this is important, that we include everybody. That's my message. Thank you.
Councillor, Councillor Grow.
Yeah, I, I think that's an excellent summation of it. It, it, it isn't necessarily for you and I in thinking about our own behavior, though it certainly is well worth it to contemplate our own subtle biases and, and bigotries at, at times, which is perfectly human and, and happens. But, but it is exactly for that. It's sending out the message to the people in the community that this is, that they are welcome at this table, that this is, this is where they can come and, and know that they're going to be heard. And also in terms of the time thing, thirty seconds, it's, it's not make or break thing. As I mentioned at O and A. During regular meetings, we, the pledge of allegiance. I've, I've said the pledge allegiance every day at school since I was in kindergarten. I am no more or less patriotic today because of it. And I don't feel like I'm less patriotic if I don't say the pledge of allegiance. But I also don't mind saying it either. And I think it reiterates again who we are, what we are, what we stand for. And I think that expanding that to include a broad range of people who otherwise have been marginalized in our community is thirty seconds well spent.
So Councillor Gross and then my turn. Go ahead, Councillor Gross.
I apologize to Councillor O'Neill and Councillor O'Hara because I've had a little blackout there. Wasn't plugged in and lost power, the battery went dead. But Councillor Worthley really summed up my feelings on this is, is this is not, you know, we, no one on this without question would marginalize any, any facet of our, of our society. But lots of people don't know that. And, and particularly the people who are marginalized. And I really appreciate Councillor Worthley's summation on that. That was very good. And that was all I just wanted to, to add that to sense and thank Jeff for his, his words.
Thank you. So in terms of my comment. You saw tonight in the meeting that someone talked not positively about a member of city staff. And I had just read that when I introduced oral communications. The council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. So having spoken that, it makes it easier for me to call a point of order to tell someone that they're out of order. Similarly, this blurb of thirty seconds. The last line says, in this vein, we as city councillors do not condone language that is discriminatory or offensive and will not accept it at city meetings. So if somebody speaking says something that is offensive or discriminatory, it allows any one of us to call a point of order. And it makes it easier when you read the requirements and the preamble. That's my opinion. And, and for that reason, I will be supporting this. Any further discussion councillors? Councillor O'Hara?
Thank you. Again, I, I support the wording one hundred percent. The work that Councillor Grow, Councillor Worthley, as you mentioned, summed it up one hundred percent. That this, the, the wording is, is extremely important. But more importantly, the practices that everyone goes forward each and every day when they, their boots hit the ground, so to speak, that they practice these. To be said is one thing, to practice it is so, so important, whether it's on the streets, in the schools, in our city. We know unfortunately, this world is, is a continual evolution. There are issues around the world. We don't need to get into what's going on around the world. But, you know, we as nine city councillors practice this every day. I know I do. You, you learn each and every day, meeting different people, how you should, how you should treat people, what you say, what you don't say, your, your movements. But I, 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 I agree one hundred percent and I, I will be supporting this if the will of the council, it sounds like it's the will of the council. Again, we, we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any further discussion? Councillor O'Neill?
Yes, I didn't, I didn't mean to sound discriminatory or heartless. I just thought, you know, that it took up time and it's that we do live by this. And so if, and Councillor Worthley made a very good summation. And I, I will be supporting this because of what everyone has said about putting yourself into their shoes. You know, it, you know. It brought it back to like the reality of some people aren't as privileged, I guess, as I am, I guess. So anyway, thank you all.
Thank you. So roll call vote, Councillor Gross?
Yes.
Councillor Grow?
Yes, thank you.
Councillor Majota?
Yes.
Councillor Memmar?
Yes.
Councillor Nolan absent. Councillor O'Hara?
Yes.
Councillor O'Neill?
Yes.
Councillor Worthley?
Yes.
Councillor Gilman? Yes, yes, let's have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Thank you councillors. And we do need to do that last one, Councillor O'Hara, if you don't mind the further ordered. Just to change the numbering, that would be a quick roll call vote.
Further order, the rule number two, order of business be renumbered accordingly and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor O'Hara, Councillor Memmar seconded. Roll call vote, Councillor Gross?
Yes.
Councillor Grow?
Yes.
Majota?
Yes.
Memmar?
Yes.
Nolan? Absent.
Absent.
O'Hara, thank you Tracy.
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Worthley?
Yes.
Gilman? Yes, yes, let's have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Thank you. It was a good discussion. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the planning and development standing committee reporter of July twentieth?
Councillor Grow?
Well, other than our public hearing tonight, we have two event approvals for the Magtober event in Magnolia in October. And Smagtober, see what they did there. And also the Fishbox Derby, which will be in September. So that's, that's the extent of our meeting.
Great. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is old business February twenty second, twenty twenty two city council minutes, getting council action to amendments for a correction of scrivener's error.
And before making, before I make the motion for that, would you just describe that in a nutshell?
Okay, so what happened at the, it, it was an omission on an appointment on the consent agenda for the February twenty second, twenty twenty two city council meeting. And we'd like to correct this because it was appointment of Captain Sam Novello to the Fisheries Commission. And it came to our attention when they were updating the website for the boards, commissions and committees. So it was an omission that he should have been on the consent agenda as an approval. And they were not referenced in the minutes.
Great. So good catch. So I move to amend the city council meeting minutes of February twenty second, two thousand and twenty two to correct the omission of the reappointment of Captain Salvador No, Salvatore Novello to the Fisheries Commission on the consent agenda and I so move. Motion made by Gilman, seconded by Gross. Discussion? Roll call vote, Gross?
Yes.
Grow?
Yes.
Majota?
Yes.
Memmar?
Yes.
Nolan absent. O'Hara?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Worthley?
Yes.
Gilman, yes. Yes, let's have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the scheduled public hearing, public hearing twenty twenty two dash zero two zero special counsel permit twenty twenty two dash zero zero five Granite Street, number fifty eight, map five, lot twenty five. Gloucester zoning ordinance sections two point three point one parentheses seven. Conversion, conversion to or new multifamily or apartment dwelling, four to six dwelling units in section three point two point two N parentheses A dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessory uses other than signs for the conversion of a two family to a four family, multi-family unit in the R five district.
And I'd like to open the public hearing and ask attorney Joel Favaza, who has been patiently on the call to tell us about what your applicant is doing.
Thank you very much. I'm just gonna share my screen real quick. For the record, my name is Joel Favaza. I'm the attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions with an address of one twenty three Main Street in Gloucester. I'm here tonight on behalf of Fifty Eight Granite Street LLC, which is the owner of Fifty Eight Granite Street. Mike Becker, one of the principals behind the LLC is also on the call as an attendee. The proposed work is we're looking to demolish and replace an existing two family house with a four unit multifamily structure. The important parts to point out at the outset is that the footprint is nearly identical. Aside from some slight adjustments to the bay windows in the front, this rebuild will not be any closer to any property lines or of any sort of significance, any, any larger footprint than the existing building is currently. Again, height also will not be changed. The highest point on the existing house is the same as the highest point on the proposed house. And we are going to be creating parking, quite a bit, parking where there is none currently. But we have background, we are in the R five, which is the high density residential district. We have a non-conforming building, a non-conforming lot. It violates pretty much every setback there is, except for the rear. It also violates a bunch of lot requirements and height as it is. There's also no parking. There's no modern fire safety and there was asbestos inside and outside this building when it was acquired. The current owner has already abated some of the nastier stuff that was on the inside of the building. But still needs to abate the asbestos shingles when the demolition happens. Relief is another one of those funny ones where the zoning ordinance sends us to multiple permanent granting authorities. So we had to go to the zoning board and get a ton of relief from them, which we got all on the fourteenth. Three unanimous vote and they actually provided to the council earlier today confirmation from the ZBA clerk that in fact all the relief was granted by unanimous vote. But I still need to come to the council. I need a special permit for the itself. And I need a special permit on two dimensions that again are taken from the ZBA and put in your hands. So this is the huge table of relief that we've requested. And this is what we've already taken care of so far with the ZBA. These last two in yellow are the two dimensional, pieces of dimensional relief that I need from the city council. And that is again, the reduction in lot area per dwelling unit and open space per dwelling unit. Everything else on this table has been taken care of by the ZBA. I have the full plan set included in the show in case anyone has any questions. Here are obviously some existing conditioned photos. We have site plan on your left and the garage plan on the right. Garden level, first floor, second floor, third floor. These are two D renderings from, on the left is what you can see if you're standing on Granite Street. And it came around to the, will be the right side of the building. You'd see the west elevation. Continuing the south elevation shows you what you would see from Gaffney Street. Obviously, in reality, there will be, you know, vegetation and other structures around, but this is the plain two D view from the south. And then as you come around to the left side of the building, you'd see the east elevation. This is a three D rendering as shown from Granite Street. And again, here's on the left, another shot from Granite Street and on the right, a shot from the Gaffney Street side. This is an overhead satellite shot of the existing building on the lot along with the neighboring properties. This is an overhead satellite shot of the existing building on the lot along with the neighboring properties. And um, tonight for those three permits, one being use and two being dimensional, there's two sets of standards that. The council is required to apply. The first one is the very familiar uh, six-part test. To determine whether or not the proposed use as a four-family is going to be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Not negatively affect the neighborhood or the district of the city to such an extent as to outweigh the beneficial effects of uh, having this four-family use. So when you go to the socio-economic community needs, we're taking two unsafe housing units in an unsafe building. And creating four safe code-compliant housing units. These units are all going to be fully sprinkled because this is a four-family, it'll be fully fire alarm. And the fire alarm will have a third-party monitoring company um, keeping tabs on, on the alarm system itself. Traffic flow and safety, right now there are zero parking spaces for this two-family. Um, per the zoning ordinance, four spaces are required. We are providing six compliant spaces. By compliance spaces, they mean they're of the appropriate width and length. And none of them block in another space. You can have six cars on this property with no one blocking anybody yet. In reality, you can get about ten cars off the street onto this lot for, you know, gatherings, no emergencies, that sort of stuff. Adequate utilities, we're in downtown Gloucester, we have everything we need already in the street. This will be no big deal to hook into. Um, neighborhood character and social structure. If you look into the definition of the R five district that's intended to receive multifamily projects such as this. Um, as to the qualities of natural environment, this is a heavily improved site. But you know, to be clear, there'll be some loss to some existing green space to create additional parking. Uh, in the rear. And then the potential physical impact. So as far as the applicant's concerned, by allowing for uses, this makes this project financially viable. There's a lot of remediation that has to happen. To take this building down. This building is a large building, since we have a lot of work to come down, a lot of work to put one back up. And so these four units kind of makes this pencil out, makes it practical to finally do something with this building. For local economy, there's some short-term job opportunities for tradespeople. There's also going to be people around, you know, working on the site. We'll need a patron. Local retail and restaurant establishments for their lunch breaks. And then for the city, you'll get permit fees, you'll get increased tax revenue on the two existing units, you get new growth tax revenue, which is like the golden goose. For a, a prop two and a half burdened city um, by creating two more housing units that do not exist currently. Uh, so that's how you get through the use permit. Then when you get to the standard for the reduction in lot area and the reduction of open space per dwelling unit. The only standard you have is you must make a finding that the lesser lot area or open space is in keeping with the neighborhood character and structural density. And so um, using the assessor's data, really quick showing you the neighboring properties. You've got a three-unit uh, up on Granite with a three thousand square foot lot. You have two units next door and a twenty-one hundred square foot lot. You've got two units to the right and two more to the right of that. Um, and so those are all just at or just above a thousand, we're at thirty-seven hundred. So I've written, sorry, all at about a thousand square feet of lot area per unit. We're at thirty-seven hundred square feet, so we're in the nine hundreds, darn close to the density that's already on uh, in the air. So again, just to reiterate, anyone who looks to make a motion. Is being requested, a special permit for four-unit multi-family use. A special permit to reduce lot area per dwelling unit and that specifically is one thousand five hundred seventy-six square feet per unit. And a special permit to reduce the open space for dwelling unit and that again, specifically is three hundred and twenty-six square feet per unit. And then I have a proposed condition, this was brought up at P and D and at the site visit. I would um, suggest a proposed condition that says the applicant must demonstrate perpetual easement access from Gaffney Street. Prior to the occupancy permit being issued for the first unit completed. Um, obviously, five of the six compliance spaces come off the Gaffney Street side and they'll be coming across, I think it's ten Gaffney via an easement. Um, agreement that's been worked out but has not been finalized, uh, kind of pending the pendency of this um, application. So of course, I want to thank you for taking the time to listen to me tonight. I'll stop my share. If anyone has any questions at the uh, this moment, I'm happy to answer, otherwise, I'm happy to sit back.
Okay, let's continue the public hearing and then we'll go back to the questions when we get there. Are there any folks that are on the call that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone on the call that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, are there any correspondences or communications?
There are none.
Counselors, now is your time to ask questions. Counsel Memard?
Uh, Joel, thank you. That, that appears to be a win-win for all involved on this property. I would ask though that you should uh, clarify or show us the uh, necessary easement from Gaffney that gives access to the created parking.
Good thing. Do you wanna um, one more question, I can hold it up while I discuss the next one.
Go ahead. That would be great.
So she'll be looking at um, the map geo-screen now. The lot in highlighting is a granite, the lot in green is uh, ten Gaffney. And I'm sure if I zoom in a little bit closer with this satellite on, hold on. Sorry, some of these layers have a, a further zoom than others. Hold on. There we go. So this shed that my mouse is circling around is going to be removed. And the easement would come across basically where this gray car is located, and my, my mouse is hovering over in the southeast corner. And kind of travel along the eastern boundary of um, ten Gaffney Street. To the right of the existing tree that we saw on fifty-eight uh, Granite for those who came to the site visit. And then everyone will pull either straight into the garages to the north or pull east. To the open air parking spaces on the right.
Any further questions, counselors?
Um.
Um, Counsel Grow and then Counsel Gross?
Just very quickly, uh, Joel, could you re-um, explain the relief that you're requesting, just so that we understand? I think the numbers on your, your thing look a little confusing.
Sure. So the, the only three special permits that my client needs left is one, a permit for use. And that is what you apply the six-factor test on to make sure that the use is in harmony. And then there's two-dimensional requirements. Um, there's requirements in the lots of zoning ordinance that says, when you get into a multifamily, you start um, requiring a certain number of minimum. Lot area per dwelling unit. And you also have a minimum of open space per dwelling unit. However, unlike other dimensional requirements which require a um, variance from the zoning board to reduce or eliminate. The zoning ordinance specifically allows the city council by simple special permit. To reduce the lot area and the open space required. If you find the lesser amount of lot area and or open spaces in keeping with the neighborhood density. And that's why I tried to show you tonight that we're right in line with how many units per thousand square feet there are in the immediate area. And also as far as open space, I think this property will still have probably more open space than most. Um, but we're certainly, in my opinion, in keeping with the structural density of the R five neighborhood and with the specific. Gaffney Granite Street neighborhood if you choose to reduce the required open space and required lot area per dwelling unit.
Um, I think it was Counsel Gross that also had his hand raised, yes?
Yeah, um, Joel, I did, I, I spoke with um, the neighbor fifty-six. Uh, Granite Street or you, you've gotten support throughout the neighborhood, I'd like to know, um, according to them. Uh, but the one, the, the wife was handicapped and they've been very um. Resistant because they didn't want to tie up a space to get a handicap space, but they said that they were assured. By um, the developers uh, that that space would remain available to them. And I don't know um, how that could, how that assurance could be guaranteed. Um, without a handicap space, that they really don't want to tie up a space. They want to leave it open for, when they're not using it.
Seriously. So discussions that we've had at the site visit did include making sure that. The one parking space for this project that'll come off of Granite Street will not impact the ability for. Um, the neighbor to park where she has traditionally parked. But I don't believe at the site visit we discussed. Be, you know, reserving that spot specifically for her, obviously, as you mentioned, the handicap designation would certainly lower the. The threshold, but at the end of the day, you know, not even speaking for my client. Granite Street is a public street, so I don't know if there's anything that we can do in this permit from the client to sequester a public parking space for her. Um, the handicap spot would help her in that situation. All I can do is certify tonight before all of you and it can be put into the decision. That the parking space that's been designed for this project will not interfere with the existing parking on Granite Street. And that we are not intending to park any cars in front of this building. Um, in that little right-of-way that cuts off from that corner. But that's about, you know, we can't really go up, step outside the box that is this type of property as far as this permit's concerned. Um, to, to start guaranteeing uh, other spaces on a public street.
Yeah, I, I thought that that was a little unusual, so.
Yeah.
And I did, and I did explain that. Um, and um. So you, you're planning on breaking ground without getting the easements first, or I mean, from what it seemed to you. Just not going to issue an occupancy permit if you don't have the easements, but um, how do you guarantee parking spaces without the easement?
Sure, so, I mean, frankly, the, the parking spaces do not work without this easement. The easement, to be clear, is a signed purchase and sale agreement. Um, there's a few contingencies on either side, you know, and we want to make sure that, you know, that if. Things are resolving or, or checkboxes are on their way to being checked off on the seller's side, but aren't quite there yet, where we have closed on the easement. That doesn't prevent um, my client at their own risk from saying, yeah, you know what? We're almost there, probably closing in a month, but I want to wait a month to start taking this building down or start, you know, um. You know, construction, right? So we wouldn't want the building permit itself hung up. Uh, waiting for the, the easement to close. Obviously, it's my client's risk and as he goes further, you know. Larger and larger to absolutely huge risk if they, you know, didn't secure that. And obviously, this meeting is being recorded as were the P and D meetings where this is discussed, as is zoning board meeting, so. Um, if there's any fear about, and we're trying to come back. Later and say, hey, we couldn't get those parking spaces, but we're halfway done building this building. Um, I think you'd have a lot of video evidence where it was clear that this applicant was aware of what needed to get done. And it's on them to get it done. We just don't want them to be stopped from starting the project if they're close to closing, but they haven't closed yet.
But, but isn't that the purpose of having established? Um, you know, these part, I mean, you know, shouldn't the ZBA have needed evidence before they granted their approvals? Of that you actually had hand, in hand, the agreements? I would think that, because otherwise, we're going to hear about, oh, the hardship, the hardship. Um, you say that they, that's all this video evidence, but you know, time and again, we've seen how that always, it's, oh, it's such a hardship. That we, you know, that they were self-created. But now, um, oh, it's going to hurt the neighborhood, it's going to hurt, you know, the people who are going to live here, it's going to hurt this, you're going to hurt everybody. It's like, I, I'm a little surprised the ZBA even gave you their approvals.
So the ZBA, which obviously, you know, grants a lot more zoning relief, it's their sole purpose. They, in this instance, as I've seen them do many times, conditioned their relief in a very similar way. That before an occupancy permit is issued, this easement has to be in place and perpetual. But they um, you know, again, this wasn't just with this project in particular, they have seen this before and have granted both of my clients and other people's clients. The ability to get things started if at their own risk, they're willing to move this along. And the zoning board has um, you know, not speaking for them, but speaking anecdotally. They have certainly had conditions before similar to this where it's expressly written in, like, there'll be no tolerance, there'll be no forgiveness. So this is solely against risk and I think that gives them the protection they feel they need. I think it would give this council the same protection. That, you know, if I or anybody else comes into you six months from now saying, hey, it didn't work out, what can you do for me? Uh, you know, sorry guys, like you were the most aware applicants I could imagine there could be.
Well, I would think it would be a clear path to a condition on a building permit, not an occupancy permit.
Again, the issue there being that if this hat doesn't close, it knocks the timeline off for getting stuff moving on the site. I mean, I suppose a demolition permit can be pulled separate from the, the building permit, the demolition's complete. And again, um, the, the sale hasn't gone through yet. Um, then they're kind of stalled out. And if they again, have the confidence that it's just a matter of when, not if, the sale finishes. Um, and they want to start, you know, porsing cement or framing up some, some floors. You know, we'd like to have the ability to get started on that.
And just, okay.
Any further questions, counselors? Counsel Grow?
I, I guess I would ask, uh, in following, uh, Counsel Gross, your condition, your, your proposed condition essentially. Says that if you don't get your perpetual easement, basically, the, the special permit dies. So it's really incumbent upon the applicant to, to make a resolution on that front and you're absolutely right. If we see you in six months saying, I'm sorry. Um, you're probably not going to get a terribly sympathetic audience, but I mean, I'd like to see this project move forward and I'd like to see it approved. And I'm, I'm perfectly happy to add the proposed condition in as part of the uh, the committee recommendations as an amendment. Moving, once, once you get to that point.
So any further questions, um, so we can close the public hearing? We shouldn't be deliberating yet on the um, the motion.
Um.
Oh, wait.
Okay, um, so I, I believe that we can close the public hearing. And I will ask Counsel Grow to do the committee report. Counsel Grow?
All right, uh. My committee recommended on a motion, Counsel Grow, seconded by Counsel Gilman, the Funding and Development Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend that the city council grant to Fifty-Eight Granite Street LLC a special permit, special council permit two thousand twenty-two. Dash zero zero five for the property located at Granite Street number fifty-eight, assessor's map five, lot twenty-five in the R five. High-density residential district pursuant to Gloucester zoning ordinance section two point three point one subsection seven. Conversion to or new multifamily or apartment dwelling, four to six dwelling units. For the conversion of a two-family to a four-unit multifamily in the R five district. And pursuant to Gloucester zoning ordinance, three point two point two footnote A. Dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessory uses other than signs. For minimum lot space dwelling, per dwelling unit and minimum open space per dwelling unit as follows. The minimum lot area requirement per dwelling unit, uh. The required dimension is twenty-five hundred square feet, the existing dimension is eighteen hundred and forty-eight. The proposed dimension is nine hundred and twenty-four, with a grant.
I will read that, um, I will continue with motion, so. Uh, Counsel Grow, I'm going to continue, it's granted one thousand.
Six.
Okay, so you, you became muddled, so.
Yeah, that's my normal state, though.
I would just like to continue because you almost got through it. Granted was one thousand five hundred seventy-six plus or minus. The minimum open space per dwelling unit, square footage is required dimension is one thousand two hundred and fifty. Existing dimension is one thousand eight hundred and forty-eight, proposed dimension is nine hundred and twenty-four, granted is three hundred and twenty-six. Will you continue with the motion now if you have your audio back on, Counsel Grow? Starting with this permit.
I'll give it a bash.
Go ahead.
This land is, this permit is made on, okay, can you hear me now? No, maybe?
It's kind of weird, but try it, go ahead.
Kind of weird and muddled, yeah. This permit is made on the basis of plans and elevations dated April sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Entitled existing plot plan of land and June first, two thousand twenty-two, entitled proposed plot land of land. And proposed floor plans and elevation submitted to the city clerk on June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Subject to new information and or debate that results from the public hearing. This special permit is deemed to be in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. And I so move. Without objection, I would add, can we, can we, you want to do that? Tell me.
I think we need to, I think we need to do this first and then do the amendment. So, uh, Counsel Grow, and I thought it was Counsel O'Neal, but I wasn't looking at the screen. Was it you that made the second, Counsel O'Neal? Who made?
It was Jeff.
Counsel Worthley? Counsel Worthley, thank you. So, um. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Well, how about a motion to amend?
Go ahead, Counsel Grow.
I'd like to make a motion to amend and add the condition that applicant must demonstrate. Perpetual easement access from Gapping Street prior to the occupancy permit being issued for the first unit, and I so move.
Thank you. Okay, the um, the amendment has been made and seconded. Um, is is anyone unclear about what the amendment is? Everyone is clear. Um, so let's. Is there a discussion on the amendment? Counsel Gross.
Uh, how are we, my, yeah, how are we uh, made aware? Because it's the building department that issues the occupancy permit, not us, so how are we made aware? Um, that this easement has gone through before the issuance of the occupancy permit?
I'm not sure what the answer is, um, without.
It's kind of important.
Can we, um, can we suspend the rules of procedures, counselor, and allow Attorney for Vazza to, uh. To comment, go ahead, Attorney for Vazza.
So the way the process would typically work is that when. This this decision was to be um, granted, it would be a special condition. So when they go to apply for the building permit, they'll have to submit their zoning decision, which will have, their zoning board decision, which will have this condition. Also, their city council decision, which will have this special condition, and then that'll be. Um, on the building department, when they go through their final check to make sure that all the, you know. Electric is signed off, plumbing signed off, engineering signed off, et cetera, et cetera. They'll also check to make sure that the special conditions on these permits have been fulfilled also. And if the building inspector determines they have not been, is then. No one's produced, no one's uploaded a copy of this easement to the the viewpoint um, permitting portal. Then the building sector would withhold the occupancy permit, so you have not satisfied all of the conditions that are your special permit. And so I can't give you an occupancy permit at this time, so when the city council necessarily to be following up on it. You put it in the hands of the Special Services Department to, um, you know, keep that condition. Um, each course.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. Um, any further discussion on the amendment? Um, seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel Gross.
Uh, yes, on the amendment.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan is absent, Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. The amendment passes eight in favor, one absent. Now we're back to the main motion.
I I'm so sorry to interrupt, um, Counsel Gilman. If I may, I just have a quick technical thing to point out, that is, was an error I just looked at the first time, if I may.
Go ahead, um.
So, this is, this is entirely on me, I prepared these slides in this application. I was just listening to Counsel Grow recite the relief requested one more time on the open space. And I realized I'd copied a number from one formula to another, where I'm asking for. Three hundred and twenty-six square feet of relief in open space, that is not correct, because in fact. All I'm able to provide is a hundred and fifty square feet per unit. So that would be a reduction of actually eleven hundred square feet. Per dwelling unit of open space, requirement being twelve fifty. The production being one hundred fifty for a reduction, a relief requested of. Um, one thousand one hundred square feet per dwelling unit. That's been looked at several times, and the first time I finally kind of struck me and said, that's the wrong math, so I apologize, I wanted to put that out there. Doesn't change the practical applications to what it is, but that's the technical number behind it.
So, can you articulate that line item one more time, because we're going to have to amend our motion?
Sure, on open space for dwelling unit, the requirement is, uh, twelve thousand, sorry, one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. Per dwelling unit, the proposal will provide.
Wait, 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 next category on our chart is existing dimension.
Sure, so the existing, let me get to that right now, the existing is.
It must be one thousand eight hundred and forty-eight.
Well, no, those things unfortunately are copied, measure it right now, to the existing. Before the existing is approximately, uh, four hundred fifty square feet. The proposed would be one hundred fifty square feet. For a relief requested of one thousand one hundred, I mean, I apologize, it's such a late hour for. Picking this up, but I'd hate for this to go through a vote and get into a written decision.
So, so the granted is one thousand one hundred?
Yes. Yeah, driveways don't count as open space, I think these calculations consider the driveways open space, which is incorrect per definition, but again, that is entirely on me.
Okay, Counsel Grow, are you comfortable making an amendment to um, to change the um, minimum open space per dwelling unit? Hmm, Counsel Grow is.
Yeah, and I I want to apologize for not catching that sooner, uh, on our end, I I thought for some reason, we could, uh, if we can move to amend, um. The motion as corrected by Attorney for Vazza, that would, uh. We we can reread that, would you like me to reread it?
I would like you to reread it, because I've tried to read it, but. No, just that one line, that's what.
Okay, the minimum open space per dwelling unit square feet. Required dimension is twelve hundred and fifty square feet, the existing dimension is four hundred and fifty square feet. The proposed proposed dimension is one hundred and fifty square feet with a relief granted of eleven hundred square feet. Uh, and I so move.
I'll say that. Um, so we have, um, a motion made by Counsel Grow and seconded by Counsel Gilman. Um, is there a discussion on the amendment, um, Counsel Memard and then Counsel Worthley?
Yes, uh, thank you for catching that, both of you, uh, I just want to be clear for the record that. Uh, while the open space appears to be dramatically reduced for the for the project, for this, for this lot. In fact, it reflects the fact that. This open space is being converted to a paved parking. So it's it's, you know, depending on your point of view, it it is open space, but it is paved parking, uh, or for that purpose, is that correct?
Yes. Okay, um, so yes, Counsel Memard, uh, Counsel Worthley.
Yes, I just want to add that. Even though this is the technical change, it's nothing different than the maps that have been advertised and what we've looked at, at. Planning development, what we've seen tonight, and. The request that they're seeking is still less than what the neighborhood typically has, so. This is not an inversion of of something, and this is not a, uh, you know, last minute change, it's a last minute change of the. Typing of the words and the numbers, but the maps that we've seen are very clear.
Thank you, any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, uh, roll call vote, Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan is absent, Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. The amendment passes eight in favor. One absent, now we're back to the main motion.
Did you want me to read a narrative?
Yes, I would, oh, um, so, so wait, so wait a sec. Um, let me just make sure we've got this right, so we've just done the, um. Done the motion, we've done the amendments. And exactly, so before we discuss it, um, yes, please do the the narrative, thank you.
Uh, the applicant is seeking a special, uh, special council permit that will allow for the demolition of an existing derelict two-family. To replace, be replaced by a four-unit residential project, planning and development. Initially reviewed the application at its July sixth upcoming meeting, and subsequently missed the dimensional requirements. Conducted on July eleventh with Counselors Gilman and O'Neil for his present, as well as several neighbors, a list of questions was drawn up to which Attorney for Vazza. Provided detailed answers at the following July twentieth P and D meeting. Recut requirements of section one point eight point three as articulated by Attorney for Vazza this evening and at the meetings were deemed to have been satisfied. And there were no communications of oppositions to the project by neighbors. The Z B A has unanimously approved ver. Request under their jurisdiction at a meeting on July fourteenth, and are. But on the G Z O section two point three point one seven, conversion to or new multifamily or apartment for six dwelling units. And relief to be granted under G Z O section three point two point two. Footnote A, minimum lot area per dwelling and minimum open space requirements per dwelling unit. A question by Counsel O'Neil about the plans for an existing tree on the property, and whether it was subject to protection as a safe, uh, as a shade tree. Was was brought up, City Clerk, Joanne Sanos researched the shade tree regulations in this region. Would now this tree would not be subject to any such ordinances and laws, and that's about it.
Thank you, Counsel Grow. All right, we're ready to, um, discuss the, um. This motion. Who would like to start, Counsel Worthley?
Sure, Attorney for Vazza, you represented your client very well, in my opinion. As some people know, I served for four years on P and D, and oftentimes we'd have an attorney or developer come in with. You know, they're asking for twelve units when they're really happy with four, and we get talked down and neighborhood sort of. Gets up in arms and then we negotiate down to nine, and it's still way more than what they really asked for, and I appreciate that you're coming in with what I think is a modest. Um, thoughtful improvement to the neighborhood. The the relief you're seeking on the space. Is not asking for it to be more dense than what's already in the neighborhood, so. Um, it's right in characteristic with the neighborhood, and I'd be happy to support this, I think you've done a good job, Attorney for Vazza.
Thank you, Counselor, who else would like to, um, discuss this? Permit. Um, Counsel Gross.
Yeah, I mean, I did, did speak with one of the neighbors and they spoke about for all the other neighbors and they were very much, um. I don't know, very much in favor, but they certainly had no objections to this, um. I do find it odd that it's moving forward without the easement. Um, I hope, Joel, you make it very clear that there will be zero sympathy if they do not get this easement, um. And we'll be. Uh, reading the, uh, the weekly, uh, real estate transactions, um, looking forward to. The the Gappy Street easement. I don't know if it'll be in there, probably won't if you make it for an easement, but, uh, anyway, I. I will be in favor of it, um, it will be a a help to the neighborhood, it's adding two more units, um, in the city with. With the added parking, which is huge, um, so. But like I said, I do have that concern, and I think it is the the cart before the horse, so I hope that we don't see this very often.
Thank you, Counselor, who else would like to, um, to speak? Um, Counsel Majota, this is your ward, I'm interested to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, and it's it's just, it's, um, very positive, uh, you know, unfortunately, I wasn't be able to be on the site visit. But, um, just hearing positive things with the neighbors and, you know, adding two units to that area, which I'm very familiar with, um. It's just great, and. The drawings, everything looks wonderful and just it would be a nice addition to the neighborhood, um. So, yes, I'm all for it, so I fully support this.
Thank you, any further discussion, counselors? Counsel O'Hara.
Thank you, um, I I I will be supporting this, um, we're taking a. A building that's obviously quite old and modernizing, tearing, taking it down, but modernizing it, making it safe. It will have, um, sprinklers, twenty-four hour monitoring, uh, that will help. Not obviously the occupants, but the entire neighborhood is, it's a very dense neighborhood. Um, and I think the addition of the units, the parking, it's a win-win as Counselor. Uh, Gross mentioned, uh, the easement does concern me, but, um, I'm I'm comfortable with. With what the explanation from Attorney for Vazza, uh, so I will be supporting this, uh, tonight, thank you.
Any other folks want to discuss this? Um, seeing none, I will add my comments. Having been on the, having been on the site visit. Um, with Counsel O'Neil, the the feeling in the neighborhood. Was very supportive of this, and that's really important, one of the benefits of a site visit. Right, Tracy? I mean, it was just, it was a good feeling. And, um, you know, in terms of looking at the standards to be applied, one point eight point three. Um, some of the the matters that. Triggered my support are, first of all, the potential fiscal impact is strong, city will get new tax revenue. Um, will have more housing units, the, um, the economic, um, needs, um. Have been satisfied because we had two unsafe units, and now we have four very safe units. The traffic flow and safety, um, there were four spaces required and actually. Um, there will be six and actually even more than that, um, we were shown. So when there are snowstorms and matters where cars have to get off the road, um, they all have a a really nice safe. Place to park, which they've never had in the past, the adequacy of utilities, um, remain on, uh, the same. And I appreciated that Counsel for Vazza, um, mentioned in the qualities of a natural environment. That there is a small degree of losing out on green open space, because now there's going to be asphalt. Um, and, um, but all the other positives to me are much more important than that, so I will be supporting that, and, um. And that's it, so there's no more discussion, are we ready to, um, to vote, counselors? Okay, let's vote, um, Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Um, Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan is absent, Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes, the yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. Thank you, Attorney for Vazza.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
You too. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is for counsel vote, the warrant for the September sixth, two thousand twenty-two state primary election.
Um, move to adopt the warrant for the state primary election to be held on September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. An ISO move.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Gilman, seconded by the birthday guy, Jeff Worthley. Um, is there a discussion, counselors? Seeing none, yeah, roll call vote, Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow. Counsel Grow, you're you're muted.
Yes, or frozen.
Okay, frozen, yes, Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan is absent, Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes, the yeses have it.
Can we get some of that fiber optic cable over here?
Eight in favor, um, one absent, thank you. A next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is for counsel vote, the Massachusetts Legislative Amendment, which would mandate all municipal meetings to be held in hybrid format. Beginning on April first, two thousand twenty-three, in discussion on possible city council response.
So without objection, counselors, I wish to withdraw this legislative action. No objections? Then it's withdrawn, thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the six-month assessment of city council legislative results, including a discussion of strong points and areas for improvement.
So counselors, I would like to spend a little bit of time on this, but we'll try to make it as quick as possible, so what I'd like to suggest is that we go through. In order of roll call, and if you can just kind of summarize what you think we've done well as a council. And, um, so discussion of our strong points and areas for improvement, and let's just. Let's focus on governance and, um, and legislation. So this doesn't become a personal thing, um, but I think that that it's important. We've been counselors now for six months, a little bit more than that, and it's good to, um, it's good to assess how we're doing. Kind of odd on Zoom, but it's okay, we're being transparent. So um Counsel Gross, would you start and just um summarize what you feel we've done well and some of your thoughts?
I'm gonna yield my time to my fellow counselors.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Grow.
Um, generally speaking, I think given um the 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 experience range of this council, it's we've actually done a pretty good job. I mean, we've had some long meetings. I don't actually mind that. I think that the only thing I would like to see is is less of less of me talking and more some other counselors talking. You know, I I feel like I I I sometimes uh hog the conversation.
I'll take my time then.
I'm done. Exactly. I mean, I I I just, I would like to, I would, I personally would benefit from more deliberation on some of these issues. Um, but yeah, I know Tracy, you look at like that, but it's true. Because you know, you can't just always look at me for the right way to go. But anyway, that's that that I I I feel like sometimes that, you know, there's one or two of us that do the majority of conversation and I'm gonna do my best to kind of step back a little bit and allow other people to have more agency over some of the discussion because I think it's really important that that everybody's voice uh is represented and represented and um, you know, bringing bringing their valid points to to bear and I think sometimes when you get windbags like me who like to talk a lot, stifle the conversation with other counselors. I'm done.
You're being so hard on yourself, Counsel Grow. But um so.
I didn't say I wasn't right. I just said that I was, yeah.
Counsel Majota, what are your thoughts?
I think uh as a council, we've done a great job working together. Um, you know, especially with in the beginning. There were uh five new counselors and I think that, you know, myself included, I feel a lot more comfortable in the role and talking to everyone else. I, on the other hand, I do love listening to Jason grow go on and on. I really enjoy it. He's very informative, you know, as you know, as everyone is so. But I do enjoy all of us working together and some of the meetings are long, but I think that even though they're long, we're all just trying to do what we feel is right and we're all getting our point across. And we are doing, you know, what we feel is needed for, you know, the city and in, you know, the the council.
Thank you, Counselor. Next is Counsel Memard.
I'd like to follow up on on what Counsel Majota just said and and I like hearing from Jason. I I enjoy his intellect and his wit and uh his contribution and I'm generally on the same side of the argument in terms of what we're voting for, whether it's affordable housing or whatever else. So Jason, don't, don't be too quiet. On on the other hand, I'm I'm very pleased with this, how this counselor is as firmed up. Based on the experience of of three prior council terms. Um, I'm pleased with uh each counselor's um stepping up and doing their homework and uh making a consistent contribution in each's way. I I'm pleased with the professional responsibility that everyone's taken. And I I'd like to thank Counsel Counsel Gilman for her job. She's put a an enormous amount of time into massaging all of us and ga- engaging our participation and managing the what's sometimes been a heavy agenda, uh but at all times being as professional as tired counselors can be at eleven thirty at night. So thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Counsel O'Hara.
Thank you. No, I'm I'm very pleased. The only recommendation. We just had a special permit come before us. Counsel Gross brought up a very valid point with the easement and we we did not have city staff to answer the question, that being the city solicitor who or building inspector who could possibly educate us. The also earlier in the meeting pertaining to uh the modifications. Uh, the mayor as CAO to be present. I I I think we're we're going forward where we're not attorneys. Uh, we need to have city staff present to help streamline these meetings when when we have questions and we need to defer to a city manager, a city staff. They need to be uh quote in the bullpen. And uh other than that, I think we're doing a tremendous job and I thank all the counselors and I thank the council president. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie, and I will take um full ownership for um forgetting to invite the um solicitor for tonight. I had made a commitment that I would do that going forward and I did not. And um I also um gave Mayor Verga an out because I I thought because he had been at O N A and he participated in the conversation that we didn't need him here, but to the point that was made with the group. There's nine members here and there were only three deliberating at O N A, so. Um, so I will make sure that I get on my game with those two issues. I will let you know that I did uh decide that um last time I got feedback that three presentations was just way too much the last meeting. So I think you noticed that we did not have Sal Di Stefano here tonight. Um, I asked him to wait till the next meeting because I will be true to my word that we will not overload, front load lots of presentations. But I'm delighted that we're able to have presentations because I think it makes us better counselors and it makes the public more aware of what's going on with a lot of these um these areas. So um so next up is Counsel O'Neil.
Thank you. Um, I think we're doing okay. Um, I'm grateful to every city council that I've reached out to for helping me understand rules and procedures and where to find things and um explaining numbers and whatnot. But uh I'm I'm very grateful to everyone who's helped me. And I'm learning. It's sometimes a bumpy road, but I'm learning. So thank you all very much. Putting up with me.
Thank you, Counselor. Next up is Counsel Worthley.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I can only use my comparison from prior councils a long time ago as a real measuring stick. And I think that experience has helped me be a better counselor. But I can say with great confidence that this is a significantly more professional and more effective council than the ones I was on before. And to the point we talk, I've been talking about long meetings. Madam President, I don't think there's a lot of time. We could have shaved, we could have shaved off a minute here or two, but none of this is a reflection on your capacity to manage the meeting. I I don't think that's it. We've dealt with some very heavy topics and they've been very robust and there's a lot to learn. And so my first council I was on, we regularly had to extend our meetings past midnight, past twelve thirty, I think at one point. Every, there was a a series of six in a row that we had like that, so. As much as I don't really want to go longer and I feel confident in my endurance here, it's not your fault. There's been a lot on our plate. And so I don't want any of that to be criticism of of your ability to move us along. I think we're doing really well there. I wish in a perfect world, and I don't know how to do it because I respect, I think we all respect open meeting laws. It'd be great if we could have a way to set some goals. I'm not sure if you can hear me right now.
We can hear you.
If we could set some goals and it's hard to do that because we can't, we wouldn't possibly know what we'd be voting on at some point, but just as far as our own development, as far as, you know, major directional sorts of things. I remember John Bell had a forum, we had it at the hospital, at a school hospital, and it was the school committee, the city council administration, one room. We didn't make any decisions, but we took sort of generic. You know, what kind of things you want to be working on. That was helpful for a while until we disagreed on everything, but it was helpful for a while to get some some cohesion on a direction. Again, that's hard to do, given all of the restrictions. And rightfully so, restrictions on violations of open meeting laws. So if we could do some goal setting and some benchmarking to that, if we don't measure it, we won't really know how we're doing. And so, uh, but I'm very pleased with it. I think that everybody's been very thoughtful, have been contributing, doing their homework. Um, this is an excellent city council in my mind and I'm hearing from the public that mostly people are pleased with the work we're doing.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, everybody.
Um, so my comments will be brief. I think that we've worked hard to work together, which I think is great. I loved what we did with the Zoom meetings for the zoning. I think that we reached out to an incredibly wide variety of people that had never participated in our meetings. Um, so I think that was, that was very helpful. I think we've been treating each other with dignity and respect and trying hard to deal with process, which is important and um. And then in terms of area for improvement, um I would love to continue seeing us really look at things that are in the charter that we should be doing. I know Counsel Worthley put in. It can be a council order. Joanne said that it could be, which is great, so we'll get that back on the um consent agenda. But you know, we should be really tackling the charter and making sure that we're doing all the things that the charter says. And that can be done with individual counselors bringing through an order. It could be done um as a conversation and standing committee to um to come prepared to discuss it, you know, so we can figure out what we can do with that. And that's important. And then we have about a dozen council orders that really need to be amended. I'm not council orders, but we have a like quite a few ordinances that need to be amended. Double poll petitions, uh, Joanne said, the burial uh ordinance, the traffic commission ordinance, the some of the volunteer boards need to be amended. We've talked about, you know, covers for some of our bins, you know, so we we can, we can keep trying to look at what council orders need to be amended and start tackling those. So that's those are my my thoughts in terms of where we can improve. But I I I really enjoy working with all of you and um, you know, five new people. It's just it's it's a lot to learn. And I totally respect how hard you've all worked to get on board. So that's it. So um, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is Counsel's request to the mayor.
Okay, so we'll go in alphabetical order. Um, so Counsel Gross. You are.
I, yep, I um, I do have one, but I'm gonna hold off on it.
Okay, Counsel Grow.
I got nothing.
Counsel Majota.
I don't have anything this time.
Counsel Memard.
I've got one exciting one that I'd like to uh put forward, uh requesting uh through the mayor that the traffic commission install a new stop sign at the on Nautilus Road where it before before the intersection with Beach Road and where the crossing exists to the footbridge.
Excellent. So Joanne will help you with a council order to get that referred to traffic commission.
Madam Chair, um, I spoke to Barbara Ian and we don't need a council order anymore because you was giving it to the um traffic commission. It's the same uh format request in an email to the traffic commission, just requesting the stop sign and they'll do, they'll put it on an agenda. So it's the same as the handicap if when you press a removal or uh approval of handicap space. So we we can just format the um the email.
Okay, sounds great.
So I'll work with you tomorrow, Joanne, on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel O'Hara.
Thank you. I I just can't stress enough uh asking the administration to do something to please keep the people, the children, the visitors out of the creek. The water is is literally a cesspool and there are people swimming and I don't think any of us would allow friends, family to go in that water, but we as a city are allowing this to happen and and it's 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 horrible. I also asked the mayor if he could, I've asked the prior uh administration if they could put signage up at Raids Chasm off of Hespera Sav which is a highly visited um park that's extremely dangerous. There's been a a location of many unfortunate, many deaths of people and there is absolutely no signs identifying the hazard. I want to thank Council President Gilman for bringing the MBTA issue forward tonight. Very important. There are many issues associated with the MBTA that uh as Counsel Gilman knows, I've asked um them to come forward. I also ask if possibly we can have a national grid. We've had the manhole explosions on DLF that fortunately, thankfully, there was a class of of uh students out of Saint Anne's that just missed that and and we need to we need to have National Grid just explain to us what they're doing in our city for our constituents. We've been extremely lucky. Uh, we haven't had any extreme storms at at extreme cold temperatures or hurricanes that have taken service out for multiple days, but our constituents will deserve to have answers and it will help help edu- National Grid could potentially help educate us on what they're doing to improve reliability. Also, Mass Mass Highway asking them to come before us because there are just so many issues. As the city grows, we're looking to expand population and they own many of the roads, the the largest one being one twenty-eight at Grand Circle. Being able to potentially ask questions and get some answers. Accidents that pass have cars turning into on Gloucester Crossing going uh southbound on one twenty-eight. It's it's horrible. But they can only be the ones to help us, so I ask um those continue to be considered by the council president. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counsel Worthley.
Yes, uh, I've submitted a couple of requests already. Oh, I think it's good to counsel O'Neil.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did. I skipped over you.
Yes.
It was definitely not intended, so.
I know, I know. Thank you. Thank, thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Val. Thank you. I do have some requests. One, I would like, would request the mayor to ask the DPW for a list of streets and a timeline as to when they will be paved. So in other words, a paving schedule of the streets of the city. I think my constituents would really appreciate that, knowing, you know, what's being done when. The second request is um to ask that the school committee post its next meeting on the city website under public notices with the date and time. I searched and searched and searched and I finally found a spot where it said somewhere that the school committee's meeting August third. But there was no time and it's not under public notices on the main page, so that would be helpful. Also, I had a constituent ask so ask the mayor to ask the school committee if there will be an emergency exit gate. Because I, their understanding is that there there's going to be a fence around the new school. And will there be an emergency exit gate in case of an emergency and where will it be? Where will it be located? Right? Also, I would like to ask for weekly reports from the um health department on the Good Harbor Beach Creek. I I understand the numbers are high and it's gonna be closed for the rest of the season, but I think it's important that we know are the numbers going up or are they coming down? Is things getting worse or are things getting better? I I I would really like to know that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counsel Worthley.
Yes, thank you. I submitted a number of requests already, um so I don't have any additional things there. I'd like to um recognize there's a, my ki- kids are part of a sailing program out of um Harbor Loop, Solomon Jacobs Park, which is free and it's um, I think Patty Page started it a while ago. Hillary Fry, who we've heard from a little bit during the the recent hearings we've had, um she's very much part of it and running it and I just think we should be excited about a free program for kids. It's eight o'clock every morning at Solomon Jacobs Park. I had a thank you to the mayor on a couple of things, uh but I'll talk to him directly. There's nobody on the call here to have to give him credit for a few things. And I, oh, and I want to thank Counsel Gil- And I, oh, and I want to thank Counsel Gilman for dropping off some cupcakes on behalf of the city council today. And I just, I use my better judgment not to be eating a cupcake. Even though she actually suggested it to me, I felt like it might have been a little setup where had I done that, I would have triggered something. But um, thank you for all the birthday wishes. I wouldn't have celebrated with anybody else other than the nine of you, so eight of you. So thank you.
So Joanne, can you screenshot the cupcakes for us so we can sing happy birthday to our Counsel Worthley and then we can adjourn?
We really have a picture of cupcakes.
That could be a very expensive cupcake.
Could you hit that one more time so we could see it fully? We could. Go ahead. Can you hit the cupcake again so we can? Anyway, so it says, happy birthday, Counsel. And it's got, it's got three cupcakes for his two kids.
We're hitting, we're hitting a little bit too close to home about cupcakes.
No, it had nothing to do with that, honest to God. So, but, but we all, we're all involved and we can get rid.
We still can sing, we still can sing happy birthday. We just don't need to have a cupcake.
Get rid of it, but it's from all of us. We all signed it and now we can sing happy birthday and then we can adjourn. Happy birthday to you.
Literally the worst song ever written.
I mean, I'm 45 years old today and it's unique because 20 years ago, I was the youngest counselor by a long margin. And you'd think 20 years later, I wouldn't be the second youngest, but, you know, I'm in a place where I'm really happy to be working with all of you and I'm not midlife yet, I don't think, but, you know, obviously thinking about destiny and fate and all that, just happy to be here and celebrating birthday with you guys.
You're only 45?
I know. I've been bald for 20 years.
Happy birthday, Jeff.
Happy birthday.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Please.
I can, oh, good. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes, and good night. Happy birthday.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neal.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes, thank you again.
Counsel Gilman. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, Kenny.
Good night. Thank you, Joanne.
Birthday.
Night, Kenny.